Come on, so.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna have Rose Trepele lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance again. Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Rose. You may be seated. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Motion carries. Next up.
Council Chair.
Chris Chair. Um. Thank you. Uh, I think before we go any further with this meeting, uh, these council chambers are ruled by the council and the meeting is run by himself. And I think we need to make it clear, once and for all, the status of Roger being up here. Before we go any further in this meeting, I mean, a couple meetings ago, he made a racial comment toward me. And last meeting, he made our clerk feel very bad to the point where she was crying. Now, if he's got the right to be up here, so be it. That's determined by us, I imagine, or it's in the charter. But if he's not, has, does not have the right to be up here, then he should not have a microphone in front of him to let him speak whenever he wants. He should be out in the audience, and when he's asked to speak, he can come up to the podium.
I, I, I can't agree anymore with you, Councilman. Uh, really, and I mean this with the utmost respect to Roger and his profession, but he does not respect this council chambers. He does not respect anybody on this council. And he definitely doesn't respect the residents where, where I have to constantly say, Roger, I mean, we have a resident who has a shirt that says point of order.
I, 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 I completely agree. Um, you know, there, there are certain things like him being added to the stipulation of the lawsuit. I would have one way to hear from, you know, he was added to it as one of the sections of not trying to basically remove his, uh, employment or whatnot. Even though he wasn't approved, the charter says by April, second week of April, we have to approve of a corporation counsel and the assessor's office. He says otherwise, he interprets the, uh, uh, charter the way he wants to. Uh, the reality is, um, Councilman Onceel here is asking that you please refrain from speaking, refrain from being, uh, jumping onto every comment on every single thing. Uh, I can tell you for myself, Councilman Onceel, if that's okay. I don't feel like he represents the council at all.
That's not, I said, I'm, I don't, I'm not saying not, not having to do that. I'm just saying either he has the right to be up here. If he does, yeah, follow those rules. But if, if, if it is not the right to be up here, he would be like any other citizen that can come up there and sit in a seat and have a microphone right in front of him. And either way, I mean, if we can't make that, if we can't make that decision tonight, please, let's find out the specifics on it and the ruling and, and implement it by the next meeting.
I, I will do that for you. You got it. I will, I will get you those rulings there. Thank you so much. I appreciate your opinion.
Council Chair, may I?
Let's, let's just continue. I don't want to have a back and forth.
Not a back and forth.
Please, Roger, this is what, this is what I think the council is discussing. Let's just move on.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna use the charter. Five point one three says that the corporation counsel can speak at any event. He's not limited to what the council chair says. I said, out of due respect, I can, but five point one three is very clear. And in fact, I've looked at.
Council Chair, it's, the, the, the question is, i- is the.
Council Chair.
He is, like, I mean, employed by the mayor.
Council Chair. Roger, I, I want to move on. Guy, Councilman Onceel, can we move on from this?
Yeah, can we, can we make that determination before the next meeting?
Yes, you have my word on it.
Okay.
I will get the information for you. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as outlined in four eight.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as outlined in four dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Council members, I appreciate you guys all engaging in your eyes. Sound a lot better than anywhere, all awake. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. You can speak on anything you'd like. Step up to the podium. In the beginning, you have only two minutes. Please step forward. I believe Mr. Abdulhaq, you asked me for an additional minute. I will honor that for you.
Thank you very.
Very welcome, sir.
Uh, Zohair Abiha, three, five, four, Rosemary. I did pass this to you. I found the original invoice of twenty-two hundred and fifty, which the mayor split it into two, nine hundred and thirteen hundred and fifty, in order not to bring it to the city council. I don't know what's the relation of this person to the mayor, because he refused under FOIA to give me the name of the fifteen employees who attended this training. He refused to give me the place or the material which we paid eleven hundred twenty-five dollars an hour to this person from taxpayers' money. So this is for Roger. If he wants to investigate residents, he can start investigating this. Because to my knowledge, the one who does the training for the city employees in the responsible department is the human resource department, who is responsible to train our employees. Not the mayor, not anybody else. And Mariana signed those invoices. She doesn't have any authority. He fired Mike Blackburn for supposedly allowing seven thousand dollars for IB electric. A person was fired, more than one person was fired because of that. But here you have his assistant signing this and basically cheating the city council of their authority. And Mr. Faranha, Roger, didn't do anything to investigate this because he doesn't work for you anymore. And you have the authority as city council to tell him to sit with everybody else and to tell him you are not requesting his presence. He's citing five point three. You should read it carefully, because five point three does not give him the power to sit here forcefully. It gives you the power, the charter, to tell him, leave the room. I don't want you here. You're getting paid for your time. There is no need for you to be here to harass the city council and harass the citizens. If he has any dignity left as a lawyer, he should resign and leave this room. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, next up, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Please, assistant gentleman, real quick. Thank you, Mr. Hakim. Oh, we got a microphone. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm Joseph Oled, a Dearborn Heights resident, uh, Jagger, uh, the southeast son, born and raised. Uh, I went, went through the D seven school systems and also, uh, the sports programs. Uh, I had a spinal cord injury in nineteen ninety-five at the age of fifteen. Um, I have been successful with that, with support through family and friends and community support. Um, I have transported myself here independently. My secondary education independence is through Henry Ford and Wayne County Community College District. My work experience is ranging from Wayne County Risa through the city of Detroit. I'm here to make good use of my time for a necessary cause to support the Disability Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Council Chair, uh, uh, just like they had that, Jupley's, uh, is, is up for a, appointment for the Disability Commission tonight. Along with, with our, our current member Blake Harry.
Thank you. Um, Councilman.
I'm also.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do, sir. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
I came from Curry, Dearborn, West Lane. Um, I know that, uh, this is not protocol, but, uh, a couple meetings ago, I talked about a pending, uh, complaint that was filed against the city of Dearborn Heights, uh, by a business owner uh, in regards to the, uh, Tony's Car Wash getting approval for gas stations. Um, at my expense, um, I went and got a copy, a certified copy of the lawsuit, and I was wondering if I could admit it, uh, into your minutes.
Um, it would probably have to be, we already approved the minutes, so how would that work, Madam Clerk? How's this time, please?
The big means for a little.
Yeah, for the record of this meeting.
For the record of this meeting?
Yes.
I think you could say that we received them.
Received loan file?
All file of it on you.
Okay. Can you hand it over to the, uh, where your assistant's, uh, council secretary?
Yeah, thank you.
And she'll pass them out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. You want to, you have, you want to finish up your time?
Assistant? Well, yeah, that's, that's the whole lawsuit. This one, it'd be, so my understanding is anytime, and I don't, I don't know Dearborn Heights protocol, but anytime there's a complaint that's filed against the city, um, that the administration is supposed to make the council aware of it. In this case, this lawsuit was sent directly to the insurance company to try to settle. Um, and, and that's problematic to me.
They're settling without our approval?
I don't know where they're at right now, but there is a hearing coming up, um, in, in, uh, April, I think April eighth or seventh. Uh, that's not the updated, um, agenda, but, uh, the lawsuit's there, the case number's there. Anybody can go on the Wayne County website and look up and see, uh, where the case stands and then, and then look into it. But I think it's something that the city council should be concerned about, because if there's, anytime you pay out from your insurance, it depletes your, your balance. And, and so if this is something that could be easily, uh, taken care of with a motion to dismiss, because the complaint is really, it's not valid. All right.
Council Chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
Have you ever served with it, or has you ever sent this lawsuit?
No. Thank you.
Are you by chance the, uh, last owner of Tony's? I understand it's changed hands.
He's the current owner.
It's current, current owner, same, same people.
My son was refused a, a gift card he had yesterday from there because of the new ownership.
I don't know how long ago, because we've been there for over a year, um, with, uh.
This, this was a fifty-dollar car wash, uh, card that was given at one of the activities Tom had last year.
Do you have, do you have a card?
Yes, he had a card in hand and he refused, my son has.
Yeah, because my, my son Mikey, if, if he wasn't there, uh, he's the only one that can make that, uh, call, and he'll take care of it for you.
All right, I'll let him know. Council Chair, before we go further, typically what we would do is, you know, receive it and keep it in our files and then email you a copy. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do, sir. You have two minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Paul Buswan, Ford Road, Dearborn Heights. Uh, a couple things. The Joey Smith Initiative, we completed that, started that, middle of that.
Oh, nothing.
Nothing at all.
Nothing at all.
I mean, I watched the mother come here, and it broke my heart every time she came. And we just, I saw you guys approve something, and I think it's not.
Okay, okay.
Next. Uh. File back at, when you guys were at Riverside, you approved a crosswalk in front of Crestwood. Is that ever gonna come, happen? Or are we waiting for the next kid to get hit by a bicycle or, uh, by a car? Okay. Next. The cell.
Mr. Deep can answer that question.
I'll finish his question, I think.
Finish my, okay. The sell of the city-owned property. Did we accomplish anything with the sell of the city? Did we, you know, approve a real estate company? Like, we need to get these properties out of the cities, out of, out of our costs, expenses. And then finally, the food truck licenses. I've been, it's been temporary licenses, temporary licenses. I'm not gonna say whether I'm for them or against them, but when it's not gonna be temporary licenses and we're gonna finally have the, our bylaws and ordinances for these trucks. And that's my final question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Say, Mr. Deep, and Mr. Deep, maybe answers questions.
Mr. Deep, is Mr. Deep on here?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, about the, uh, crosswalk, as you know, um, uh, we had, uh, uh, a citizen, a resident, uh, contact the state against the placement of the crosswalk in front of her house. And, uh, that citizen succeeded. So we had to redesign the project and move the crosswalk to a different location. Um, and we are working with the school now, and it should be on schedule for this construction season. So that's, that's the status. It got delayed because of that, um, complaint.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Without disrespect to Mr. Deep, um, this, this is a very hot topic, and it's been for a couple of years. And I think something like that, the administration should let, let us know what's going on. I get people talking, not all the time, but it's, you know, say, what about that crosswalk? And I had no idea that there was.
Actually.
A case that was lost or won or whatever.
It, it wasn't a lawsuit. There was a complaint. As you know, uh, Council, uh, Councilman, the, the lady contacted city council. In fact, she was on, on, um, city council, uh, raising the complaint. So she actually raised the complaint during the city council meeting. And, and what happened subsequently is basically the eighty percent grant that we received from the state through the, uh, SIMCAG, um, was basically at risk. Uh, they didn't want any part of a controversy. So basically, uh, it was either, uh, you relocate or you lose the money. So we decided to basically just find a different location.
Did we find one yet?
Yes, it's, it's in design now, yes. And we worked the location with the school. Uh, it's ju- basically, uh, south of Lawrence Street, and it's aligned properly. And, and so basically, we had to redesign the project, um, and, and, um, ready for construction.
Awesome. That's good to hear.
That is really good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job. Uh, anyone, uh, Mr., you're gonna stand up.
Hey, Blake Curry, I live on C six two five, thanks, I'm Ahmad, so a member of the district commission. So I would like just to relay a question to you at the government. No, is it, is there a master plan throughout the city that probably has anything assessable?
Uh, you know, that's a great question. Before you go pause this time, Mr. Deep, the master plan, the four-year-and-a-half master plan, what's going on with that one?
Okay, so, uh, again, the issue was money. We didn't have enough money. And so we received a, a, a grant to start, and the grant was federal, uh, procurement. So this is why we had to go through the RFQ process, interview people, come up with a selection. Um, um, and we had five departments in the city share with that. And in December, um, uh, the city council approved the selection. And we're actually now in, in the preliminary stages. We do have, um, we do have a company. And, uh, as a matter of fact, I was talking to our new procurement person today, uh, about placing, um, the bed on the street again. So it, it's, it's happening. It just got delayed again because of, uh, funding source.
Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Reaction to counsel, um, if you guys can maybe look at the master plan from the former administration and look at any changes in this administration, just see if any changes, because a master plan has to be assessable for people, for this like that, things like that. So if you guys appointed me, so I'm gonna do, if you guys appoint me to do.
Thank you so much, and, and we're lucky, we're lucky to have you, Mr. Harry.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you. God bless you. Um.
Happy Ramadan.
Thank you. Happy Lent, Happy Ramadan. Um, who is, who is next in the audience? It's not, we're gonna.
Council Chair. I'd like to bring something, talk about something.
Huh?
I'd like to talk about something.
Hmm.
Thank you. Um, this past week, we had an incident in the D seven school district area where, uh, there was a person that made, uh, threats on social media about, uh, shooting up a school. And, uh, the person was identified and, uh, later apprehended. And I'm not sure about his current situation right now, if he's still apprehended or he's out. However, this, um, this person lived almost directly across from the elementary school. And even though the initial threats were not made to that particular elementary school, um, the, uh, the police department, whoever was in charge of that, took it upon themselves to, uh, check to, check it out, get this guy apprehended. And, uh, but in the, in the process, they failed to, uh, to, uh, to, um, have the District Seven School Board and Superintendent not notified about the situation. The Superintendent didn't learn about this situation until later that night when his wife seen it on social media. Now, I know they're, they're, they had a meeting today with the police department and the superintendent, and they worked some stuff out. So I don't know what the result of the meeting was. I'm, I'm gonna find out. But this is something that's serious. This is, um, this is like a no tolerance, zero tolerance. And this comes up, even though this gentleman was threatening a school about a mile away, in which my house is two blocks away from where this guy lives, um, he could have decided to walk out of his house, say, you know what, I don't have time to go all the way over there. I'm just gonna go to the school right across the street from me. That day, during the day, the kids are out on the playground playing. And if you sit on that gentleman's porch, you have a clear view of the playground where hundreds of children are out there playing. So I know there was some talk about today at, at the meeting that things are gonna be notified, people are gonna be notified in the proper procedure. I think this, this, we can't sweep this under the rug, and I know no one plans on doing it. I know the police department and the chief do not plan on sweeping this under the rug. But this is something that's very important, and it wasn't even gonna be brought up today. I could, I was just waiting for someone to bring it up. But it wasn't. And this is our children's lives and the safety. And the bare minimum is, when you get a threat in a school district, you notify the superintendent of that school board immediately. And they could take proper action, what they think they should do, because that's their job. And maybe we should, you know, I, I know there's some, some plans made about notifying them when this happens again. But maybe we should contact, like, the Oxford School District and Oxford School, see, tell them our situation, what, what we could do. Let's not be naive enough to think we, we have all the answers, and we don't. So I hope this situation never happens again, but in the event it does, we gotta do the proper thing immediately for the, for the, uh, life and security of our children in our school districts. That clear?
Good job, Councilman. We're gonna move it over to, uh, on Zoom. I'll start off with Council, I almost said Councilman Ahmad. Start off with Zoom with Mr. Kamal or Mrs. Kamal, Mr. and Mrs. Kamal.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Kamal, uh, Dearborn, and it's Roamer Street. And, uh, I'm just gonna speak about what, uh, Councilman just mentioned, actually, because, uh, it was my, uh, children's school that was, uh, threatened. And, uh, I'm trying to get a breakdown of what happened, why there was a miscommunication. I don't even want to say miscommunication, because there was zero communication, uh, in that it took almost a week to notify the school district. Um. The, the, the police department was all over social media, all over the news, praising themselves and how quick they acted and what they did and what they, how they took care of the situation. However, they refused to communicate with the school district. Is, does the police department even know how many school districts are in the city of Dearborn Heights? There's at least five different school districts in Dearborn Heights. Have they communicated with any one of those school boards? No. Because now they're backtracking and trying to clean up the mistake that they made. It's posted, they posted it on the weekend of March first. That's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. However, now they're backtracking, saying that it was not, they didn't get arrested until Tuesday. They were notified on Monday. Then they notified the school district on Thursday night. Those are lives at risk, and they can say, no, no, there was no risk. There was. So they don't know what was going on, if they were just watching the person, what they were doing. But they, there, there needs to be some answers, and, uh, this needs to be seriously looked at. So thank you for your time. And, and again, I don't know who's, who's overseeing this, but something needs to be done. Uh, there needs to be some changes and some serious questions need to be answered.
I, I, Kamal, I'm so, so sorry. I, I, the fact that a parent is put in this position to me is, uh, I'm lost of words, and I'm sorry that, you know, this is something that when you laid your head on the pillow, that's what you went to bed thinking, and I'm sure you're probably still thinking about it. Uh, and really, my heart is with you and your family. Uh, and I'm, it's devastating to hear that even something the smallest communication that may seem like it's not important enough is extremely important. Um, and, and really, I, I can tell you, even if there was just extra security or extra police presence, that goes a long way. It really does. So I thank you for coming forward here, and I think Councilman Onceel also for speaking up on that as well. Thank you. Uh, next up, Barb. I do, ma'am. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have two minutes, and I can actually see the light in your home this time.
Okay. Uh, Barb Runney, Detroit Street. Good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, we need to protect the children a lot better. Uh, I didn't hear about it for a couple days. I don't have any social media. I'm probably the only person that doesn't, but I don't. Um. I have a couple of things I have to ask about. Well, actually, two things. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna go something very light. I'd like to wish Mo, uh, happy belated birthday last Friday.
Thank you, thank you.
And to our wonderful, fantastic city clerk Lynn. Her birthday is this Friday, so happy birthday to Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, now here we go with the good stuff. I'm not gonna swear today.
That's fair.
I am, would like to talk about eleven C, the, uh, first reading of the short-term rentals. Um, thank you, Gary, for finally coming up with something. It took this man only a week to do something that someone's been working on for eleven months, but that's besides the point. Um, as to somebody that's going to enforce this, during the week, it's okay for the ordinance department, but on the weekend, when all the partiers and all the drug addicts and, you know, prostitutes come, ordinance is not working. Uh, police were able to write ordinance tickets back in the day, and that's the only way we're gonna be able to find out. Um, as I said a couple of meetings ago, I will volunteer my time to type up a letter to every Airbnb, send it out.
You and Angela will do that, because she's pointing at herself.
I, I, I talked to Angela, her and I, you know, she's my girl. Um, and to send a letter to everyone also in the city that lives near one, so every resident should get one, saying, if you see something, say something. And let's rack up all these tickets and, and get rid of these. And Angela will help me and let me know when you want me to start, and I can, we can have these out within a week.
Your time is up. Thank you so much, Barb.
Wait, I have one more question, Mo.
Your time is up. I am so sorry. I'm gonna give you ten seconds. Go ahead.
Okay, eleven B, uh, the resolution twenty-four dash three-three-zero, what is that?
Which one are you discussing?
Eleven. Time is arising from City Council motion twenty-four dash three thirty.
We will discuss it when we get there. How does that sign, and I'll even specifically name you. Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you, Mo. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Barb. I appreciate you coming here and speaking with us. Next up, we have Rachel Lapointe. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, even though I said your name. You got two minutes.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Hey, Rachel, how you doing?
I'm good. Uh, so Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I was planning on speaking about the situation with the D, with the D seven and the police department and Dearborn School District and the lack of communication. Um, as a parent in D seven, I'm appalled that we couldn't communicate such a simple thing. And upon researching it, it's actually required for the police. And upon researching it, it's actually required for the police to report this to the school districts in a timely manner, and considering they had apprehended this gentleman on Monday, and then it was another few days before the public found out, there was ample time for them to notify the school districts before making it public. So if they can't even follow these simple state rules for these kinds of safety issues, how is any parent supposed to feel safe? Or like the, the police department's gonna come to our kids' help in a real crisis? They have to get this under control and get a clear plan and be very public about how they're working on this, if not the details of it, so that the public can feel safe. And then real quick on a couple agenda items, I just wanna absolutely support our city clerk with the precincts. We're gonna save a lot of money that way, and I think that's amazing, good job, Lynn. And then I hope all of City Council was able maybe to check out what um, Chris Lapointe wrote over on DBH four-one-one about this week's meeting, especially the claims section, he really dove into some stuff there, and I hope you guys were able to read that before the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Have a great meeting, guys.
Thank you, Rachel, thank you for all that you do. Next up, we have, can you, can you lower their hands, or have them lower, can you guys lower your hands if you've already spoken? Thank you. Next up, we have Shannon Shepherd.
Good evening, guys.
How you doing, Shannon?
Good, um, I just wanted to make a couple clarifications, I made a couple errors.
Can you just raise your voice a little bit?
Yep, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple errors I made on the budget amendments. Um, item A, the capital outlay line item, um, that should be reduced by twenty thousand because uh, that was actually, that's a duplicate uh, request. So that was my fault. Um, that amount, the requested amount should only be two thousand five hundred, not twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, and then, um, item L, there was a miscommunication on that, that actually does not require an amendment, so that one can be deleted altogether.
Is that all left?
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, no more pen in the, yeah. Yeah, no more pen, that's all it's giving me, the rest is all cut off.
Good afternoon, everybody.
How you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
My name is Good Citizen, I live on Highland Street, near Ford and Telegraph. Uh, quick points, I appreciate the council members that were involved in uh, passing out water at the mobile home after that main break.
Thank you.
We see you, we appreciate you, unfortunately, the mayor is here, is not here at another meeting. Um, just keep, keep your feet on, keep, keep your fire on them and, and, and have them disclose what they're doing, because honestly, we live here in the neighborhood. We don't, we don't see enough patrol, we don't see enough ordinance. Um, I appreciate the city workers, I know they're doing as much as they can, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Good Citizen. Next up, we have iPhone. You have two minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Don Kaminsky, uh, Amboy Street in Dearborn Heights.
Hey, Don, how you doing?
I'm good, I, first of all, I'd like to uh, give kudos to our police department. Uh, we had a late night disturbance out in the street, uh, the other night, uh, it was a, it was a fight and uh, three cars. They responded in wreck, in fantastic time in three minutes. And they uh, one of the perp, the guy that started it all, he took off. They tracked him down to his house, and then they arrested him, so great job, guys. Uh, yeah, they all need a pat on the back. All right, and uh, I'm not sure if you've heard, I don't know if there's any truth to this rumor, but our illustrious mayor uh, seems to be uh, appoint, seems to have been appointed the ambassador to Tunisia. Uh, what's moving forward from that, how are we going to replace this guy?
With grace and then prosperity and.
The council chair becomes the.
I'm just, I'm just, just curious, so uh, I, that just came across one of my feeds on my uh, on my iPad, so.
We, we, we will cross that bridge when we, when we're ready, I, I don't have the answer here.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thanks. There's a process. Thank you. All right, guys, stay on track here. Yes, sir, Councilman uh.
So, Mr. Samansky, I hope your wife gets better, I talked to her earlier, she sounded uh, sounded pretty bad with these allergies. Um, secondly, my, uh, I have a few questions for Mr. Dancy regarding the water departments accounted, I wanna put just uh, regarding some issues with some residents that we've had and we've been dealing with. I had an incident over the weekend of a resident, a couple residents on social media saying that they began the same exact water bill, every billing period. Uh, same dollar amount, same usage, over and over and over, and it's reading actual water readings. And this is not one or two residents, I mean, I can count a handful of people that called us with the same issue. We have a city employee that works in this uh, building department, or in the water department, who does billing. She came on there calling us clueless, that we're spending, uh, spreading misinformation and causing chaos. That all these people that come in, the only thing the city tells them is they have a leak. And she claims she has a fix for all these leaks, it's a toilet flapper, and that's what she wrote on social media, ten-dollar fix. Um, when I told this resident with this water bill, um, to please call the city and make sure your meter gets checked, because you're gonna, once the correct reading is, um, has been done, that you would uh, you would actually get the actual bill, probably something's wrong with your meter or your reader. And she told me that she started going and insulting us, um, saying that we don't know what we're talking about, where this is political. I know about, Councilman, this is important, I actually sent an email to see if this employee can come and speak um, regarding uh, this issue, cuz it's an ongoing issue with a lot of residents that, when it's their last resort, they reach out to City Council. Because every time they walk in the city hall and go to the water department, the only thing they're told is you have a water leak. Not your meter is bad, not your meter is misreading, or something's going on, you got a leak. They go out, spend a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a plumber to come out, tells them, looks at their meter, tells them there is no leak in your meter. Why are employees spreading information from the water department saying it's a ten-dollar fix, when some people are coming in with four, five-thousand-dollar bills? And is this person, or I wish to name, name is Sheila, she does uh, billing. Is she a licensed plumber?
Let's not, let's not name any names, Councilman.
And I mean, I mean, but these are complaints coming from residents, and, and this is, this is, this is nothing against this employee. This is a ongoing issue in the water department. And I really feel for our residents and their water bill. Some of them are coming here for solutions, they're told they have leaks. They're calling plumber, I went to a few residents' homes, a plumber was there, there is no leaks, their toilets, their flappers are perfectly fine. If, what's the solution, and that's why I'm asking you, Mr. Dancy.
I was gonna ask what your question is, but fair enough. I think the uh, I mean, in order to look for a solution, first off, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask any employee to come here and speak in front of the council that spends their day trying, I feel like, to help out the process or help out the city as best they can. But uh, I mean, I think our only solution at this point really is compiling this list of all the residents that have an issue.
If I may?
Yes.
I, I was gonna save this to my closing remarks, I'm like, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say it now, since this is being brought up. I've been in contact with Bill Wolf from GLWA.
Yep.
I spoke with him uh, over this past couple of weeks, that we were trying, when I said that there was gonna be an investigation taking place. Uh, and I said that we were gonna try to get it done for free, there was a woman that went on maternity leave, she's back. And so her, him and I have been talking, trying to get some dates, we're gonna have two, two types of workshop town halls. It's not gonna be where we're gonna be attacking them, but it's where residents are gonna be able to bring their water bill. Every single resident that has an issue with their water bill can bring their water bill forward to GLWA, they are gonna do their own investigation and see exactly what is happening through, through GLWA. Uh, so I'm gonna set up maybe, maybe two to four, you know, depending how much we can, but we wanna be able to get as many people as we can to be able to see them and speak with them. I was gonna save this to closing remarks, uh, from the council. You guys brought it up.
Know that I've asked, I mean.
Um, I talked to you about it a little bit, but I didn't give you much information, just cuz I was kind of weighing out on some of the details. Some of the dates should be coming out in the next week or two, about when they will be able to have this town hall uh, for residents to be able to come up, speak with somebody, tell them their concerns, and every single resident they send will be heard back from.
Yeah.
So this is great news for the city, at no cost.
Agreed, I mean, that's.
This is at no cost.
Many help we can get, one other solu, solution I suggested was um, right, we have two meter readers and one meter repair tech, and it's kind of it's unrealistic to ask them to go out and physically or visually inspect a lot of these meters, but if we make it a priority between council and the administration to say, hey, clear our schedule, or even one or two council members can go with me and we can visually inspect all these and gain some information as well, cuz I, I wanna get past the old stuff like this, there's so many other things that this should be taken care of and kind of resolved, but there's so many factors to why we've gotten to this point, it's long, I think, even before many of you have been up there. It's long before the mayor was in his position, it's long before I got here. But uh, yeah, I mean, I welcome it, between workshops with GLWA and a clear your schedule, let's look at accounts, get a list of addresses, cuz when we it's hard to get solutions when we both agree that there are these problems in the system, unless we have addresses and appointments that we can go out to, it's gonna probably have grievances if we are the ones going out there doing union work, but we don't have the staff to have them do it. So, I, I mean, I welcome that, at least, if we I'll take any help I can get when it comes to the water.
Let's, 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 let's wait to see what's happening in GLWA. I think what the councilman here was technically saying was, Councilman Saab was saying was, we shouldn't be telling the residents you have a leak. I think that's what he's saying, I think so many times we get phone calls. Yeah, and I'm sure almost every person in council gets it, where it says like, you know, I was told I have a water leak, I brought a plumber, and the plumber tells me I don't have a leak. And I think that's the issue that, 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 you know, we're, we're being, we're, we're running into. Council chair.
I'll address that with the employee.
So.
Thank you.
My two things is, is that I honestly, and I asked this council to honestly, I want a full review of the water department, the process and procedures, and what's going on, and uh, I mean, I, I've, I've literally talked to about fifteen residents in the past ten days, and some of them are actually on Zoom. Um, that the only thing they're told, when they call or come to the water department, is you have a leak, nothing else. Nothing's going on if you checked their last bill, or, or, and it's an actual bill, and then they tell them you have a leak. Now, I understand if you have a leak, your water bill's ten dollars, a hundred dollars more. But to get the same exact water bill, the same exact juices, down to the same penny billing period, and this employee said, for your information, thinking that we're that incompetent, like she said, that it's not monthly bill, and I can understand it's bimonthly, sometimes it's two-month uh, billing cycles coming on the bill. When it's reading actual, so it's, when it's reading actual to the penny, there's a problem, they shouldn't be misinforming people.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'd like, I, I'd like to, maybe later on in this meeting, I'd like for the council to approve a full review of the water department. Even if we have to go out and put it out for bidding, contract it out to a third party.
Full review, okay, are we done, Mr.?
It's.
Thank you, guys, thank you, yeah, thank you, Mr. Dancy. Um, I don't even know, okay, are we done here? Next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights City Council, approved current claims on ACH wire transfers six dash one through six dash twenty-eight, six dash thirty through six dash thirty-eight, and six dash forty through six dash sixty, submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Alowski Maxwell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. But two that matter, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is Acting Chief of Police Haidar, bid award Police Department Car Care Services.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights City Council, award the bid for the, for Police Department Car Care Services to the VIP Car Wash and Westbourne Car Wash, and authorize the controller to return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders, in addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire February twenty-twenty-six, and authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants as outlined in seven dash eight.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Yep. Uh, this, this has so, something to do with this, um, I know this was submitted to us before, uh, we put out for bids. Um, back when I first got in City Council, maybe a little bit before, when a department wanted to put something out for bids, they came before City Council, and they said they got approval to put something out for bids. Instead, right now, they come to us, but they already being put out for bids. Uh, and. Without our approval. Instead of coming to us with, I don't know when that's changed, cuz it, it was never that way. Ever since I watched City Council meetings, it was, uh, a director came before City Council, and they said, I'd like to put this out for bids, you, you have your approval. City Council approved them to put it out for bids, then they went, put it out for bids, and that came back to us. So a lot of times we get stuff that, if they come to us, we can say, okay, make sure you have three bids. A lot of times we don't have three bids, but that, that way, we could, we could, we could control what goes out for bids. Instead of them coming to us, whatever they think needs to be put out.
You know, I, 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 I wholeheartedly agree, let me tell you why, the council makes sense on this. If there's certain things that we can't afford, why are we going out for bids? Like, for example, when the, when the, when the properties went out for bid, and no, nobody knew they went out for bid, you know? Uh, in the past, I think also Vince brought this to my attention, where he's, you know, I think he said at the last meeting, they request to go out for bid, and then they go out for bid, and then we approve the bid. Yeah, so that's where it's always been, I don't, I don't remember anything changed where someone asked to change the procedure and that, yeah.
Like the council chair? I think this one is necessary, I don't think people realize, um, in the back of a police car, it's a sport, or you need, that needs to be. Well, we need, this is for, no matter what. Now, you have to have it for a police officer's protection, and any prisoners they transport after somebody has soiled vaccine.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make clear, Councilman Wanso wasn't saying that, Councilman Wanso was talking about the process as, as a whole.
Right, but this one is, I think, different as far as being necessary.
Thank you.
Always been there.
Councilwoman, uh, Breyer.
Yes.
Are you outside here, Councilwoman?
I am now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Breyer.
I just wanted to let people know that I believe it falls under the category of fifteen hundred dollars or less, doesn't have to go out for bids.
Uh, guys, I think we're getting way off topic on this.
Well, and the other thing I'd like to mention is, there were two people out of the four or five that asked to be considered. One of them doesn't even have a business license, therefore he was dropped. And uh, we have a lot of pages here, one forty-five through one ninety roughly, regarding the two people that were considered. And I'd like to congratulate VIP, their references are impeccable, and most people don't know that when we had COVID, he was actually doing services for nothing for our police department. And he's always been reasonable, and there's no reason he shouldn't have been selected.
I agree.
I'd like to thank you, Gary.
All car washes is staple in the community.
Yeah.
I just wanna make very clear one more time, for the last time. I don't think Councilman Wanso was questioning who the bidder is being chosen, why we chose a certain bidder, or uh, if we should be going through with this bid, it was just regarding the bid process, that's all he was saying towards the end. Uh, but let's move on from this, thank you so much, council members. Next up, we have Commission on Disability. We have to vote on it. Oh, do we not vote on it?
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, congratulations to VIP and Westbourne Car Wash. Next up, we have our Commission on Disability Concerns Appointment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved to the Dearborn Heights City Council, can care with the mayor's appointment of Rachel Lapointe, Anar Hujaj, and uh, Joseph Willett. The Commission on Disability Concerns, who all reside in Dearborn Heights, terms expire uh, in July twenty-twenty-seven, as outlined in eight. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
I have a, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I, I thought Mr. Perry was gonna be on this commission.
He's already been approved.
He's already been approved, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Wanso. Oh, yeah, thank you, um. I, I've known Rachel since she was a little, little thing like that, believe it or not, and uh, Joey, I've known him almost his whole life. And these are two fine people, and the, the other candidate, Anar, um, I'm sure, I'm sure they're a, a, a really good candidate, but um, this commission is very important, and I think we need to establish, we got, I don't know how many we have approved now, do we have six or seven approved?
Six or seven approved? Uh, I don't know the number, four or five approved. But I think we should start some kind of process where they can start having a meeting. And uh with with the Veterans Affairs Commission. Uh, I'd like them to work together with them too, but th- this this committee is so important and it was it was banned, I don't know how what the term is, banned or abolished or something back. Deactivated, deactivated, you know, uh, a few years ago and for reasons I don't know why. But I'm glad we've got it back and congratulations to the members that have been approved and. Let's move forward because it's a vital vital uh asset to our community for sure. Thank you, councilman. I wholeheartedly agree.
All in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have commission on women and girls appointments. Councilman Saab.
Durban High City Council concur with the mayoral report requirement of Rachel LaPointe and Menar Hojage to the commission on win-. On women and girls who are both. Who both reside in Durban Heights, terms to expire April twenty twenty seven as outlined in eight, be but council chair.
Well done. We have a for a second. Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Councilwoman Breyer, I do apologize. I was actually gonna have you read it, but I didn't hear until. So please forgive me. I want to give you the second on that. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Saab.
A while back, this came in front of us and I believe we asked for some information or clarity on this. There was a female that worked for the mayor's office. Her name was Ash. How come she's no longer on this commission or many of these approvals?
Councilman, I don't know. I'm not gonna go back and forth this on this commission. The mayor has the rights to his appointment. And if he chooses to whom he puts on. Uh, by all means. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have the watershed steward commission reappointment.
Council chair.
Councilman. Constant.
I moved at the Durban Heights City Council concur with mayoral appointment of Luciano. Markin to the watershed stewards commission to fill a current vacancy. Term to expire September twenty twenty seven is outlined in eight C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? I do have, I I looked over the gentleman's uh. Uh, his resume, extremely amazing, well put together resume. He also worked for the clerk's department. He also used to work for the water department. This is an individual who has. Wanted to continue to work and and invest in the city of Durban Heights. And I can tell you, I am so proud of this gentleman, uh, because he's not going away and he really, really, really loves the city of Durban Heights and. When I think of individuals like this gentleman, um, who really cares about Durban Heights, it makes me feel good to know that we still have great individuals like him. That care and want to continue to invest at all forefronts of of the city. So congratulations to him. Hopefully this passes tonight. Any other discussion?
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
This appointment is so valuable to the uh watershed steward commission. I'm I'm a member of the watershed steward commission. And our our appointed commissioners. Attendance at the our meetings are so low and probably, you know, eight or nine times out of ten, we don't have a quorum. And we can't vote on stuff. We just discuss issues.
Can we change those bylaws?
We're trying to. We're trying to get it.
You you the, who's the president of the commission?
Kurt Whitmore.
Okay, well, great. That's what you guys can do. Get a quorum moving, change the bylaws of how many people you need in order to have a quorum. I mean. Our 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 police commission right now, X seventy eight commission, only needs three and only need two to be available.
Well, we've we've tried. We've we've come up with the idea where our our student commissioners, which are high school kids from the area of high schools. The ones that are eighteen years old, uh, become commissioners. All you have to do is be a registered voter, voting age. And uh we can become a commissioner and that stalled in the to the administration. Over a year.
Crazy, man.
So we really need this. This appointment is very valuable to us and uh. Uh, Luciano, we can't wait to start working with them too on this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the problems was we also have in the South Durban High Civic Association, we have the same person in charge. He will be moving the end of this year. And at times, the mayor suggested we merge the two organizations.
You know, I.
So we fought that.
Uh, yeah, I I agree. The the merge of those two wasn't the right decision.
Right.
And to really disable the watershed steward commission, and a commission that's been around for a long time isn't the answer. Uh, but I'm I'm pleased to know that he's going to be joining here shortly. All in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have clerk senior reserve. Relocation of polling location. Very hurtful, but.
I'd like to read this one.
Woman Breyer.
All right. Uh, I'd like to recommend the motions the Durban Heights City Council approves the resolution approving the relocation of the following polling locations. Precincts three and four would move from River Oaks to Durban Public Schools, the Heights campus. Precincts five and six from Saint Savina would move to Riverside Middle School. Precinct fourteen from City Hall to Carolyn Kennedy Library. Precinct eighteen from Kinlock to Canfield Community Center. Precinct nineteen from Robishaw to John F. Kennedy Junior Library. Precincts twenty one and twenty two, which I'm well acquainted with, I'm the chair of twenty one. Will move from Sorn to the Senior Center, the Eaton Senior Center. Twenty three, twenty four, twenty six and twenty seven, which are Bedford, Pope, Party and Madison, will move to Annapolis High School. This will create a huge savings to the city. We're narrowing it down, which at once was a high of thirty seven precincts, it'll get down to fifteen. We're gonna save a lot of money and I want to sangle in for putting this together. Now, here it is. Now, there be resolved that the above city of Durban Heights polling locations. Be relocated accordingly and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Durban Heights commence the process of such resolution. In accordance with Michigan election law, resolved that copies of this resolution shall be transmitted. To the Secretary of State, Bureau of Elections and the Wayne County Clerk's Office as outlined in nine eight.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Um, any discussion?
Council chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Wanso.
I I think that's a great idea and I have a question for the clerk. Um, are you gonna be doubling or tripling the staff at these precincts to handle the extra load of voters?
We will be adding. We'll have to check and see how it goes. I'm sure we'll be adding at least one per precinct. Um, as far as workers and then, of course, we have the NHS students. Um, we have found that there has been a shift from in-person voting to. The permanent ballot because people don't have to apply for a ballot anymore. They just sign up for the. Um, absentee, they just sign sign up for the permanent AV list and they automatically get a ballot. So we have over seventy four hundred. Wow. Um, that are automatically gonna get the ballot whether they're voter now, we don't know, but they're gonna, and if you look at what I had. We had provided, I think in August of twenty twenty one, which was similar to this. Or in twenty twenty one, I can't say it's August. It's similar. They had eighty four hundred total. Not absentee, total voters. So if it was the same right now, it'd be seventy four hundred. And so that means, you know, a thousand for the precincts.
I appreciate your hard work on this. I'm I'm sure you did a lot of research on on the number of people that show up at these polls and all that and.
And and we compared it to the local election, you know, and then, of course, we increased. Or we redistrict and consolidated because the state allows that to you now, because there is a shift, you know, um, in the voting process.
What kind of notice are you gonna give the voters?
A lot. I mean, we're working, everybody will get a new voter ID. We will provide to them, um. Um, each voter will get. Like a picture of where your current location is and where your new one's going to be. So they'll have that. We'll have, um. We had talked about using all of our billboards. So you have the PD, the fire department, you know, the senior centers. Um. Any kind of social media, we would ask the city council, we'll have the city do it. We'll have a flash on the on the on the website. Um, any avenue and anybody can share any ideas with us and we can see that we can do that. You know, make sure that we do it. We'll have signs because we will have extra vote here sign. So maybe we'll put a one at the old location saying, you no longer vote here, go to the next one. And they're not that far away, but we don't want to accept voters or discourage them either from going to um. From going to large sign at the um, yeah, maybe the Michael Berry Center, flash announcements on the website. The city Facebook page as well as Instagram and city council page, the electronic um, billboards. We could do a uh and then we could even do a video.
Great. I'm sure you did your due diligence.
Yeah, and and they had a good team and Dana Hilton, Candy Birchfield, who was the former um. Um, deputy clerk, we're all a good team.
Great job. Did you consider skywriting?
But maybe you could get one with the bill.
Great job, Lynn, and and your staff too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman else out there?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I just wanted to add, Lynn can tell you the exact amount that we anticipate this will save. It was very nice. It was like fifty, it's like thirty one thousand.
Forty three.
It's thirty one thousand, but overall, because we pay, we. We pay a preventative maintenance fee to our. So because we're not gonna have as many tabulators, because we're not gonna have as many precincts. Um, we're gonna save on preventative maintenance fees, which currently is eighteen thousand, over eighteen thousand. In addition, um, the county is negotiating with Dominion to. Buy our old tabulators that were, or, you know, to buy them back or something like that. So that's in addition. Um, I think I shared with you that we had, um, with the one security grant, the election. Um, election security grant, we did purchase, I think it was five tabulators. And Dominion gave us like a thousand dollar credit for each one of them because they will be taking the the ICP ones off of our homes.
Thank you.
Great job.
We're also saving custodian fees. Yes. And that's always been a problem. When one custodian has to go to more than one place to open up. We're supposed to be there at six AM and sometimes they don't get there by six AM. Because it takes us almost an hour to get everything up and running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I I said through this uh, um, I'm on the election commission, so I was able to sit through this. And it, you know, it was a bittersweet moment, you know, I mean, somebody that, you know, I've I've been on the ballot since two thousand and seventeen. I was on the ballot twice in two thousand seventeen, once in twenty twenty one and twice in twenty twenty three, primary, general, general, primary, general. Um, you know, seeing that this is gonna be different locations and being able to minimize it, it actually makes it a lot easier, even on the candidates. So overall, this is great. All I ask is that we please, 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 on the next two years. We put it, those certain polling stations, this is no longer your polling station, you are moved here.
And we were required, we will put it on the building, but we can do more than that.
Yeah, even if we had an individual, they had to pay for the the first next election, just not even know. Hey, we're so sorry. You're actually no longer here. You're gonna be at Annapolis. Say you're no longer here. You're gonna be at Riverside. Just so that, you know, individuals that are so used to, you know, out of sight of their mind sometimes. Thank you.
And one more thing, I wanted to tell you that Ma Reddy been cocked, because we would have to do this um with Wade trim. So that we, they can do the GIS for us because we'll have to, of course, have new um precincts.
Thank you so much. All in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed? And no, the eyes have it.
Thank you.
Next up, treasurer explains investment of twenty twenty four portfolio returns.
Council chair.
Councilman. Ahmad.
I moved to the Durban Heights City Council, received note and filed the twenty twenty four. Year end report for the city of Durban Heights Investment Performance Review as outlined in nine dash.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Hi. Hi.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, treasurer explains point acceptance policy.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'm over the Durban Heights City Council, received note and file, the treasurer's office coin acceptance policy is outlined in nine C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Breyer. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Hi.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Building and engineering director while in budget amendment.
Council chair.
Councilman.
I moved to the Durban Heights City Council, approved the budget amendment to transfer six hundred dollars from one oh one dash eight oh one dash eight one seven zero zero zero. For the purpose of adding two hundred dollars to one oh one, eight oh one, nine oh five, zero 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 and four hundred. Dollars to one oh one, two four seven, nine zero five, zero 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 as outlined in nine dash.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Hi.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Controller Shepard, budget amendment. Anybody? Seeing none, dead on arrival. Next up, city engineer, new fire station site selection.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved at the Durban Heights City Council, approved the beach daily site selection for the new fire station and authorized the initiation of the design phase. As outlined in nine up.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell. Any discussion on this one? Councilman Wanso reached out to me, so I'm gonna have him go up first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I know there was two sites that were uh approved initially. And there was soil samples taken and they both passed soil sample and. Uh, the the city administration is asking us to approve the beach daily site. Um, beach beach daily is a two two-lane road. And uh, it has, you know, a a an engine coming out, would have to, you know, stop traffic for two lanes. Where the other site is on Warren Avenue, it's a five-lane road. It's a much easier access to all the rainroads right off of Warren to take off. So um, I'm gonna vote no on this because I want the uh fire station to be on Warren Avenue. I think it's a much better place. It's the. It keeps the golf course, the golf course for now, because ever since we've uh been talking about the golf course. It was, we're keeping eighteen holes and we're gonna hopefully open up as many holes on the east course as possible in the future. And this is the, by putting a fire station there, this is just hindering any plans of opening any additional holes on the golf course where. We can just as easily put it up on Warren and keep the golf course the way it is for now.
I I I gotta add down and commend you on this. And I'd be a coward today if I agreed on voting yes on this one because I stood here. Well, actually, I stand in Councilman Ahmad's seat and uh there was Councilman, former Councilman David Abdullah and Councilman Musket. And Councilman Wanso, the entire time was shouting and saying, I don't want this because people are gonna build on the golf course. And I told him, you have my word. Anytime they come to try to build on this golf course, you're gonna hit, I'm gonna stand here. And I said, I. Not saying anything about Councilman Wanso. I said, but I'm a lot younger and I don't plan on leaving anytime soon. I said, I promise you, if something like this comes before us, I'm gonna vote no on it. I'm gonna tell you, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I gave you my word in twenty twenty one. I'm gonna give you my word again today.
Um, do you think we can hear from uh engineer deep just to about the location?
Engineer deep?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, so uh the two sites were examined, uh geotechnical were completed, uh both both sites are buildable. Uh, the comment about the easy access, uh both myself and the engineer who did that review. Agreed that from a traffic volume standpoint and from um um uh the site orientation. As you know, the Warren Avenue site is skinny and deep and then it's got residential uh next to it. Whereby the golf course, I already spoke to the golf site operator and uh the expansion. The the additional uh uh expansion on the east side is up to the north end. So the south uh location, so the southeast location that we selected for the, for, or we recommended for the uh uh station. Is not a detriment. I understand, um um, you know, i- i- the site is 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 ideal. Uh, it's large enough, it's wide, so we're able to put four bays and 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 still provide traffic in and out. Uh, the volume of traffic and and another consideration was also uh the school nearby the entrance to the to the golf course. Um, that's that's just a recommendation. I mean, we can know either way, but uh from the standpoint of traffic flow and and capacity. The beach daily is the one that we recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Deep.
Sure.
Mr. Deep, I got a question for you.
Sure.
What is it gonna take for us to move it on Warren?
What do you mean?
We'd like to move it to Warren instead of Beach Daily.
He just said it's our choice, but he's saying the law on Warren is much smaller and you got the school right there, you got residential homes.
Yeah, councilman, but yeah, you know, you know what also it is? When when the firefighters did their test, I believe. To see where the best response time came out of, came from Warren, didn't come from Beach Daily.
Let's hear from Chief Rogan then, since he's here.
Well, he's walking up there, councilman, uh council chair. I believe the 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 distance from the school is about the same at both locations.
Yeah.
It's 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 a very.
Is it?
A very west end of the golf course and this location is just down the street of Beach Day. They're pretty similar.
The pickup, the pickup location, sir, is is off of Warren and not Beach Daily. So the traffic, the the. All right, the vehicle of traffic is always on Warren and they're also expanding their parking to make it part of that. So the pickup location is Warren through the golf course and go to the parking lot. That's how they pick up anyway.
Well, real quick, Chief Rogan, before you begin, I know Councilwoman also has some things, Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell. So if 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 we can hear from her before, because I don't want you to be getting stuck up here. If you want to write down any questions, then I'll go and then I'll have councilman.
Yeah, I I don't agree with the beach daily location. I'm gonna tell you. location. I'm going to tell you why. I live by the light, by Kennedy and Beach Daily. There is no crossing guard for the Riverside kids to cross there. And let me tell you, they like playing in the middle of the road. I mean, if you've got to turn left out of my sub and wait for these kids to walk across, they're, they're wrestling. I mean, they're playing around. I don't want to see fire trucks to have to deal with that. There's no crossing guard there to say, hurry up, there's a truck coming, you know, a fire truck.
And this, and this isn't a high school, it's a teenager. She's right.
They don't understand the importance of getting across the road.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Councilman Saab.
So I, I, I have a two, uh, few questions too for Mr. Deep or, uh, Chief. So, now, unamended on Warren, uh, my questions are, this is that we already have a traffic light there. Is that light going to become an emergency traffic signal? My second thing is, would, uh, fire station have its own entrance away from the golf course and would we be using the golf course's parking lot to maneuver in there because of, they're going to be redoing that parking lot and in the summertime where people are golfing, their parking lot's full? So.
And, uh, for, for, for many of those, I'd have to refer to, um, to, to Mr. Deep. He's, he's going to be the expert on the, on the way that it's developed. I would say I do share the concerns with the, you know, where we're at right now with Crestwood. That's, that's, it's just been a high priority of ours to not be in the traffic flow of the school. And that, that's the main problem with the Warren location that, that I see.
Thank you. Uh, let, let me ask you, w- where would you as the police, as the fire chief like to see it at?
I, I could tell you that we want it in, in for the best response times and that, and that's like the Beach, Beach and Warren is basically where they said, we're going to have the best response times from. As far as, as far as, um, the exact location, you know, we, we can be flexible. That's, that's up to you guys. I, I just have, like, two times a day, we're locked in with, uh, when school is in and out where we're at right now. And I'd be concerned with, with having that same problem, you know, many years down the road is, is that, is the school, you know, the, the way that they get out of school, they come down Warren and they travel right, right in, right by there. They do a lot of the, uh, kids pick up in the parking lot itself. And if we're at Beach, we would be free of that traffic flow. That's, but now, now it is on the golf course. And so that's the trade off. And I understand that you guys have, have issues with that. And so, um, you know, that's, that's.
You know, I, I, I know it's been an honor for me to cut you off. I do know that the superintendent just passed the bond for Crestwood School District and they're going to use bond money to kind of, uh, make their circle driveway bigger. Um, and, and so preventing so many issues, they're going to be able to stack a lot more vehicles now. There's a lot of open field on Riverside at the front near Beach Daily and Warren. So they're going to start shifting some of the teachers parking lot over there and making, so that parents can start coming and dropping off and picking off kids a lot faster, sooner and easier for them. I know that that has been a topic for them. Anything we could do to support our schools, I can tell you this, all of us here are all for it.
Okay. But I don't know if there are any other comments from Mr. Deep about the, uh, as far as the emergency light and using that lot and the way the station's going to be situated on there, that's, that's really up to the, the engineers.
Yeah, you don't have to go into that detail, but I can tell you, building on the golf course, not for it. I'm just not for it. Councilwoman Breyer.
Where exactly is it on Beach Daily? Is it near the entrance into the golf course from?
Yeah, it, it would be just, so you know, that's like the maintenance road entrance onto the course. It would be south of that where, where it's raised up a little bit. You can see, once you get any further south, I mean, if you go too far south, it gets into where it will flood.
That was my concern, how close we are to the flooding area.
Yeah.
It's outside.
It's too far.
See it.
It'd be closer to Joy Road in that sense than it would be on, on Warren, Beach Daily. I'm saying closer to Warren then.
Right, you know.
Yeah, closer to Warren. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Are we going to pick a location to where we're voting on?
Voting. Oh, no, I would, this one is bringing on, this one is coming on as the location is.
Well, we can amend the motion, Council Chair, and pick Warren.
I wonder, I'd rather refer, have them give it back to us at Warren.
Right, and we got a rejected person, want to bring it back.
I mean, I would like to see it just kind of sent back to administration. Mr. Deep can send it back to us with the saying the Warren location. Just so we can iron all the kinks on it and whatnot.
I think that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Councilman Saab, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, will you second his amendment to refer back to administration?
Refer back to administration, send it back to saying that the location will be on Warren.
Second.
Second, ma'am, quick, is that all set? All in favor to refer back to the administration, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Fire Chief Rogan. Purchase and payment of using grant funds turnout gear.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of turnout gear, including coats, pants and boots from Phoenix Outfitters for a total cost of fifty five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars funded by the State of Michigan Gear Grant to be paid through the fire. Medic account one three one three three five nine four zero zero seven five as outlined in nine dash G.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Council Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Wanso. And the chief just gives, let us turn out here. It's a big, big chunk of money, but I just, I just curious, I seen that.
They use some grant funding.
Yeah. Right, yeah, I know, I know.
So it's, it's, it's just the, the coat and pants. It's just what we call all of our, all of our gear. So it, it's boots, uh, coats and, and.
Okay. The stuff they would wear to a fire.
Yeah, yeah, they were into a fire.
Helmets and everything.
Yep. And so the, the purpose of this grant was to try, we're trying to get every firefighter two sets of gear. So when you come back from a fire, you don't put the dirty gear back on, it can get, well, you have time to wash it. Usually we would just wear it dirty and then at the end of the shift, they would, they would wash it and, because it, you know, all the thrust engines and that, that are in the, uh, they get caught up in the gear from the smoke. So this is a, a one hundred percent, I mean, we have no match, uh, that the state got us this money. So it's a race.
Chief, is, is Phil going to get a new uniform out of this?
Pardon me?
Is Phil going to get a uniform out of this?
We don't give Phil anything.
No.
Yes.
Hey, leave Phil alone.
Hopefully Phil gets one of his, uh, uh, turnout gear.
Yes.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Ordinance and Animal Enforcement Director, I don't want to say it last day, hung. Lafive. Non-city owned lodge grass cutting contract extension.
Council Chair.
Motion, uh, Councilman Constance?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the extension of the non-city owned grass cutting contract between the city and artistic landscaping and lawn service to include the twenty twenty five grass cutting season as allowed by the current agreement at the city's discretion. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment. Furthermore, provided, provide issued for payment for these services. Authorize the mayor also any such payment as necessary expense. The city council authorizes warrants to be issued for payment of these services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charter Section eight point nine as outlined in nine H.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Last time I, we were going this fast, I jinxed us. I'm not even going to say what's happening. Next up, Parks and Recreation Director Zubinski, twenty twenty five smart contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the smart municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year twenty twenty four and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary copies of the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in nine dash I.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Treasury Hicks Plan Resolution Supporting Federal Tax Exemption for Municipal Bonds.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution supporting federal tax exemption for municipal bonds resolving the following. Now, therefore, be resolved that by the governing body of the city as follows. The governing body hereby encourages the Michigan congressional delegation to assist the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan by preserving the tax exempt status of municipal bonds by supporting and ensuring the protection of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be furnished to all members of the Michigan congressional delegation as outlined in eleven dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, City Council Resolution relating to claims arising from City Council Motion twenty four three three zero.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
Um, I move that the City of Dear, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution related to the claims arising from City Council Motion twenty four dash three three zero as outlined in eleven B.
You got to read these two a bit ahead.
I don't have my glasses.
Want Councilman Ahmad to read it?
I got it. Um, okay, whereas the city unanimously adopted Motion twenty four dash three three zero to approve and distribute certain raises retroactive to July twenty twenty third that were voted on and approved at several prior city council meetings. Also, whereas Motion twenty four three three zero approved such raises to the following positions in the C D B G Department Director, Grant Coordinator, Project Coordinator and Program Coordinator. Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. And I think you were supposed to read the ending after you read those two, I believe.
Oh, it wasn't highlighted.
Well, no, I'm saying read the ending right here. That the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt resolutions related to claims arising from City Council Motion twenty four three three zero is outlined in eleven B. Any discussion on this? We got, we got a motion by Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you for that. Next up is eleven C, First Reading of the Proposed Ordinance H twenty five dash zero two, Short Term rental slash Barb Brenner slash Angela Venegas slash, everybody else that have been fighting for this.
Council Chair.
This is a lot, Councilman, you ready for this one?
I think so.
All right, let's go.
Move that Dearborn Heights City Council move, move that proposed ordinance H twenty five zero two, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan relating to and upholding the prohibit, prohibited, prohibition of certain short term rentals, ensuring that the prohibition, prohibition is not the, give me another paper.
There you go.
Diluted or diminished, uh, diminished through the improper internation, internation or application of existing provisions in the chapter thirty six of the city code enhancing the city's ability to enforce this prohibit, prohibition, I can't even pronounce it right now, no more. Prohibition and providing the, for stricter penalties for the violation of this prohibition. Uh, be it obtained by the city council of the City of Dearborn Heights, that the code of ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan is hereby amended by adding a section to be numbered.
Thirty six eighty one.
Thirty six eighty one, be considered for the first, uh, considered read for the first time pursuant to the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act in chapter thirty six of the city code. This proposed ordinance is referred to the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing related to the proposed ordinance and to thereafter provide its report and recommendations to the city council related to the proposed ordinance. The Planning Commission shall hold such a public hearing and shall provide its report and recommendations to the city council within sixty days of this date this motion is, is adopted. Further, the Planning Commission shall, shall comply with all the requirements of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act of chapter thirty six of the city code and shall ensure that all such requirements have been compiled with the undertaking these actions, including conducting a public hearing, complying with all the newspaper publication notices required, requirements, and compiling with, with any other written or other notice requirements that may be applicable as outlined in eleven C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constance.
Man, I wish they could make this writing a bit bigger on this one.
Oh, Councilman Saab, I didn't, I told you it was going to be a long one. Um, any discussion?
Council Chair. Councilman Ahmad. If you don't mind, I have a question to Mr. Miyaki. I'm sorry I didn't call you earlier. Um, and the number six here says principal residence means that one dwelling unit where an owner of the property or tenant for a period greater than twenty seven consecutive days in the month of February or greater than twenty nine consecutive days in the month or any other month. So basically I can rent, like, January is thirty one days. I can rent, I can still rent, have somebody rent a property for twenty, for thirty days? That will be short term rental?
A, a, a normal month to month type of rental or rental for a month. And those are, uh, those, there, there are already regulations in place to deal with that, that normal type of rental situation.
Okay, perfect. That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much. This is perfect.
Thank you. I want to tell you, Mr. Miyaki, um, Barb, Angela, Councilman Wanso, Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Saab, Councilwoman Breyer, Councilman Constance, Roger, all, everybody. This is, this was a, this was a united, we came together. We heard the voices of our residents and we simply said, nobody wants to live by commercial. We chose to live in a residential neighborhood. And that's that. And I think the council here took a stance and, and really I'm, I'm proud of everybody here because this is true leadership when we came together, moving the city forward. Gary, thank you for that. To all the council members and the residents have really been voicing their opinion. Congratulations to you guys. Hope this passes here. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Oh, that's, you asked for a discussion.
I did. I think I asked the person. Nobody said anything.
Yeah. Um, this, this, uh, this ordinance, you know, it's a, it's a lot of, uh, whereas and thereas and, you know, it's a lot of legal jargon. I, I've read it a couple of times. And I know one of the things was the, uh, the thirty day deal. Um, I'm just wondering if someone comes in and says, hey, I want to rent it for thirty days. And then he rents it out on the weekends with someone else or sub lets it out or lets someone come in there. I mean, there's a couple of other things on there. We can, we can talk about them before a second reading. But I, I know she used a couple of my ideas in there too. I appreciate that. But, uh, um, it's, it's, it's really good. It's a good start. I didn't see anything in there. I mean, um, I guess some of the legal stuff I didn't understand that, that well, but are we, that, that ban officially that bans them or we can't say we're banning them?
Which, if, if, if I may, the, um,
they are already prohibited, in, in my opinion. But the, the, the prohibition is not expressly stated and clear. It's just that whenever something does not have permitted use, it is automatically a prohibited use. You should, I know you've been on, I think the Z B A and Planning Commission are probably familiar with that concept. The difficulty is that that would allow someone who might be trying to avoid this type of prohibition to use other types of provisions within zoning ordinance to play games to end up getting around that. This makes it crystal clear, clarifies what's going on. And also, uh, one of the things that you didn't see, it also adds a rebuttable presumption that if you've rented something in this fashion as a short term rental and advertise it, then essentially you are in violation of the ordinance. So it makes it much easier from a prosecution standpoint to be able to follow through on this.
And I know one, one of the things in there was a five hundred dollar fine for any violation.
Yes.
Um, can we up it? Yeah, I mean, can, can we like do it for every day? You don't pay it. It's five hundred dollars.
It's because of other sections within the city code and specifically chapter thirty six. Every day is, uh, a, a violation could end up being prosecuted as a separate violation.
Can we up it?
You could up it, but five hundred is always a, a safe amount from the standpoint.
Two days, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think a thousand dollars.
That's a two days.
Some people might come out and say, well, you know, this is a cheap rental. We'll take the five hundred dollar fine. Covers the cost. If you tell them a thousand dollars, they might spare them a week. I'd like to see it higher.
But if the landlord is going to be paying the fine, not the tenant.
Yeah, the landlord might come back and say, well, I'm making twenty five hundred. If I pay the five hundred, I still make two thousand.
Who's going to spend a day?
Who's making twenty five hundred a day in Dearborn Heights?
I don't know.
It's not a lot.
We can always, we can always amend that.
Yeah.
Let's get this passed.
Well, and you could, you could, you could revisit this after it goes to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission have Well, and you could, you could, you could revisit this after it goes to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission have to do it because it's a, an amendment in the zoning ordinance. So it has to under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and under chapter thirty-six. It has to go to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation and they also usually will conduct a public hearing. So, um.
You know, um, also in, in my original resolution, you know, I say, I stated that no ordinance is any good unless you can enforce it. And for many years, we've been trying to get more ordinance officers. You know, especially me, I mean, we're all in favor of getting more. We passed the, a, a, a budget amendment to add three new officers over a year ago. And in that time, we've gotten one officer for half a year. So I think we should, if we, can we put something in there that we can get a, uh, hire and assign an officer just for rental properties?
Well, I don't think that would be appropriate for this type of ordinance. And moreover, the rebuttable presumption makes this a lot easier. Because several years ago, I had to uh, prosecute someone for having a dance studio in their house. And it was very difficult to prove it up. But we use the advertising, but then there's what we call a foundation issue in terms of getting that evidence in. This makes things a lot easier in terms of that. I think frankly, it would be much easier for uh, Director Lefeville to, uh, to follow up on, uh, on this at this point. And I, 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 I don't think this is necessarily a manpower issue. It's just, it just cuts it short. I'm not saying there's not a manpower issue. I'm just saying that, uh.
I think that's for a different discussion on, on a different.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a manpower issue because like I said, if the best ordinance in the world, and this is a great ordinance. I mean, I, I, everything in there, I said, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, nothing, not one thing. I said, no, we got to delete that. But like I say, you can have the best ordinance in the world. If you don't have the manpower, I mean, we, after this passes, and I'm, I'm sure it will, we should have another study session, how are we gonna enforce this? I mean, through the police department, through the ordinance department, through the public reporting things.
Our cadets.
Yeah, some, I mean, some, we have to have a way, this is, you know, everybody's been waiting for a yee-haw and no one enforces it. There, there you go. You know, and then there's parties going on still. I mean, only the, only the one or two that, that are vocal are gonna have but there's some of these going on. So we have to, we have to put something in place to enforce this ordinance.
Come on up. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Most of this is gonna happen on the week.
Talk through the mic though first, please.
Most of this is gonna happen on the weekend. So it's gonna fall on the police officers. Um, you're not gonna have most of your Airbnbs Monday through Thursday. So it's gonna fall on usually Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays.
Sure.
So that's where most of it's gonna land on is the police officers.
So maybe we ask, maybe we ask if our cadets or maybe our reserve unit particularly, uh, can assist.
Well, if I may, if I may, one of the points is, is that advertising, offering for sale or offering to lease is also a violation. So that makes it so much easier in this situation. You can go online, see who's, who's basically listing these things and follow up accordingly.
Take it down by it.
Well, there you go. That's a great, that, that, there's the answer.
It's a far more straightforward way.
Airbnb doesn't get addressed.
You have someone on the weekend, basically follow up and find out what the address is.
But AI tells you whatever picture you send in, what house.
Chair. Council chair.
Yeah. You know, maybe until the meantime, till we, we get a, 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 a specified ordinance enforcement group or, or a gang or rental gang or something. Um, maybe we can use the approved money that we have. It's in the budget for two officers that we didn't, for overtime for weekends.
Yeah. Mariana, can you let us know if that money's still in there? No, can you go into the mic real quick? Remember, we, we, we budgeted for three ordinance officers. You know, sometimes, you know, we move money around. Is that money still been there or did we move it around?
It's still there. No budget amendments have passed.
Okay, great. So can we use that? So if we did a budget amendment to pass overtime for, um, uh, certain ordinance officers to oversee short-term rentals, that's something we can do, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Budget can be amended as you desire.
Thank you.
The council chair, we still have the issue of manpower on that too, if people are willing to work overtime.
Yeah, well, one guy is right there, something right there. That's for, that's for a different, uh, discussion, Councilwoman.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Council, council chair. I, um, uh, I understand that the council is passing on the thirty-six five-two-two. Uh, the Planning Commission, which has the authority to hear, um, all the issues first. And on the, uh, section thirty-six five-two-three, for the record, section D, that the Planning Commission will make the, the decision and it comes to you. Um, I don't agree with, um, the, the theory that because something is not specifically permitted, it, it doesn't automatically translate it, uh, permitted doesn't automatically translate it to being prohibited. Um, I think that's a false, um, statement. And, um, I would reiterate, um, for the record that with, um, you cannot amend a charter by a resolution. Therefore, I, I argue against, Miyaki had no authority to put any ordinances or work on behalf of the council. In other words, the council cannot have its own lawyer and then the mayor quote has a lawyer corporation counsel. Because the, uh, the charter does not provide for that, does not allow that. And the council, and corporation council is allowed to speak on the five-point-point-three at any point. In fact, I have a document, so I have no problem bringing to Mr. Miyaki that shows that the position of corporation counsel does not expire. It was approved by this council and it, um, and it was, you know, put forward and voted on and, um, written by Mr. Miyaki. So anyway, I'm just putting for the record the authority.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion?
Do I need to?
It's, it's not necessary. I don't, again, I don't want to have the back and forth on this. I think this is long overdue. I think the residents have voiced their concern. I think people are like, I don't want to live next door to somebody that's partying all night and dropping, you know, alcoholic bottles and flicking their cigarette ashes because these are all the stories that I heard. And then Councilman Wensel just told us about how he witnessed it the other night. It was like a bunch of cars lined up on the street. It's not necessary, guys. We're a bedroom community. Small, small. We're, we're, we're just really small community. It's okay to be a small community. We don't have to be this big, large community with Airbnbs and a bunch of other things. We got bigger issues to tackle right now. And so I think this is a, a, a step in the right direction. But if there's no other discussion, I'd like us to make a vote on this now. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Oppose.
Ah, that is, Councilwoman, I'm gonna ask you to rethink that.
It, it needs tweaking and before I.
This is the first reading.
I understand. They're going to the planning commission, then it comes back that
You know, Councilwoman.
After a study session.
We just had that discussion, Councilwoman.
I wanna make sure that's the case.
This isn't fair to our residents who've heard for hours and hours. You know, uh, we'll take a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Um, Denise Menelowski Maxwell? Yes. Hassan Saab?
Yes.
I'm Wensel.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer? If it goes to the study session, I'm agreeing.
You have a vote on the table right now, yes or no?
Yes or no? Nancy Breyer? It, it needs tweaking. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Moby Doom?
Yes.
Robert Conson?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes?
Thank you for the roll call. It's a good day for Dearborn Heights. I, and I'm glad that the councilman was able to change her vote on this. Corporation Council. Roger Forenoy, Warren Valley, Warren Valley Liquor License Resolution.
Council chair.
You sure you want to read this one?
Yes, the order is bigger.
Councilman Saab.
Move that Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution approving Revive Golf Management as a participant on the city's liquor license and authorizing the sale of alcohol at Warren Valley Golf Course. Resolving the following now therefore to be resolved pursuant to chapter eight of the city's codes and ordinance of the city of Dear, that, uh, that Dear, that the Dearborn Heights City Council hereby formally approve recognizes Revive Golf Management LLC as a participant on the city of Dearborn Heights's liquor license for Warren Valley Golf Course under MCLL for participation permit and be further resolved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorizes Revolve Golf Management LLC to serve and sell alcoholic beverages at Warren Valley Golf Course pursuant to the terms and conditions of all applicable laws, regulations, and concession year agreement between Revive Management and the city of Dearborn Heights. Be further resolved that the copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission as required for administrative record-keeping and compliance proposal as outlined in thirteen eleven B.
Support. Yeah.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad. That motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell. Any discussion? Council chair.
Councilman Wensel. Um, before, before you step away, Councilman, real quick, to the young lady that's walking out with her son. I just want to recognize you guys for coming to the meetings, the last three meetings. I know you're leaving early, but we thank you for your civic duty and showing up here every night. Round of applause for you guys coming here. Thank you.
And Blake.
Blake, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was the lives you were.
They'll tell ya. Thank you. Council chair. Yep, sorry about that. I didn't interrupt you.
Um, you know, I don't want to use the word transparent. I want to use the word honest here. Um, uh, there's not too many people more than me that want to get this golf course thing a hundred percent behind us and running forward, but um, this liquor, I think we have to, should put this to a study session. I, I know it delays it, but the original contract stipulated, um, that there is a, uh, uh, a ten percent fee of alcohol sales from the golf course, the banquet center, and the bar. Now, we, now, I don't even know, are we ever gonna get, uh, liquor sales from the banquet center or the bar? And, um, and who's gonna be selling the liquor at the banquet or passing out at, at a wedding? You know, who, who's gonna be selling the, at, at the, at the cigar bar or the steakhouse if there's any liquor, like anything? I mean, it was, it was stated in the contract that all you approved and I denied, um, that uh, we would be getting ten percent, which of the sales of banquet center and the bar, which is a huge amount. And I bet you it's more than what you get at the golf course. I'm not, maybe I'm wrong, but seems like you sell a lot more liquor at a wedding and a, at the bar. And when these golfers come in, I mean, I, I think you sell the liquor inside the, the pro shop or on the course, you know, with carts? It doesn't, this, none of this is, is, is clarified in this. And this is what happened with the original contract. Original contract was so open with nothing specified, very little specified. And I don't want that to come back and bite us in the butt. I mean, um, the, we should look, have a study session, look into this and see what the original contract that we agreed on or city council agreed on as far as the liquor sales, uh, I know there's an address change. Now it's two different addresses. This is something that I want done, but in the same, I want it to be done the right way where somewhat a golfer's not gonna be drinking on the golf course, drink too much, come into steakhouse, have an accident. Who's liable? Are they gonna be able to sell it in the steakhouse when it opens up? Are they, you know, any other place, you know, in there? I mean, this is, there's just too much open in this kind, in the, in this, uh, in this resolution that, you know, I gotta vote no. We should have a study session on this. Go over what was originally, the RFP or whatever it is, specified all these things and it's not what we, we agreed to.
Councilman, I got a question for you. If you don't mind.
I can answer it. I'll answer it.
Did you call anybody before you had this discussion here today? You called Jason from Realize?
No, I didn't.
Did you call Mr. Issa?
No.
You called Mariano or anybody?
No.
I mean, you think it's fair to them that you're telling them this right at the part of discussion here?
I just, well, I don't understand what you mean.
Do you think it's fair that right now, this, this is something I believe that they've been working on? Or even Roger or, or what was his name? Because I mean, there's been emails going around with the attorney.
Hmm.
Uh, what was his name? Jimmy Allen. Yeah, Jimmy Allen. They've been going back and forth regarding this. Um, I believe they said they have ironed out all the things. You want to have a study session? I'm all for it. All I'm saying is I feel like this is a discussion that we should have had with Jason. We should have had with uh, the administration. We should have had with at least the attorneys that are involved. And I'm not just speaking and not over here just saying, well, I don't think we should move forward with it. Look, at the end of the day, I wholeheartedly agree. We agreed on the contract that, yes, I did vote on. Right? Because we not voted on that golf course contract, the one that you didn't vote on, we blew, we would have lost all of our green in our, in our, in our, in our, yeah, you voted no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I voted yes. I voted yes because if we would have went held off a whole nother year, we'd have no golf course today. The residents would have empty land. So I couldn't put myself on the pillow knowing that if I did that, all of our greens would have been fried by that whole summer. Because we would have delayed it. Hang on real quick. If Jason Prell is here, I'd like to hear from him. Maybe he can answer some of those questions.
Council chair, one, one comment. This is, this is the liquor license. This has nothing to do with the actual city contract. This is, this is for them to add.
It isn't a contract.
No, this is.
Ten percent of the sale.
This, this is the license. This is not, this is the liquor license.
Yeah, but he's, he's right. Councilman Wensel is right on this extent where it says, like the license contract says.
I understand, but this is the state's license that they're giving them to sell alcohol. They haven't been able to sell alcohol.
I know, but they're giving it to them on a different, what is, Councilman Wensel's saying is it's coming to a different address. What happens is the contract that we all agreed on except for Councilman Wensel was, um, it was approved to go to a specific address on, on, on the lease unless the lease was changed. But the lease was changed, wouldn't it have to come before us?
It did. You, you voted, Council Chair, with all due respect. Um, the, uh, the restaurant is not going to serve alcohol. The address was changed, approved by you, was submitted to.
I remember voting on that.
Yes. So the address is that no liquor will be sold at the restaurant. It's at the, at the pro shop. Um, the, uh, approval, the liquor commission had a hearing a week and a half ago, so everything was aired out and decided. We made sure, I think right now MLCC is working to change the address in the Laris system, that's it. But the liquor commission, uh, approved it at the, at the pro shop address. So, uh, only thing I would say is that we got a notice, I, I mean, total transparency about alleged violation of a, uh, at five this afternoon, um, alcohol server, which doesn't make any sense because Jason was approved. And, um, we'll clear that out, but it's, that's all that's happened. Everything else.
Can we hear from Jason? Hey, Jay.
Hey, guys. Um, all right, so to start off with the ten percent. The contract does say ten percent of all liquor sales that occur at Warren Valley, that includes both addresses, two-six-one-four-zero and two-six-one-one-six, which is the pro shop and the banquet center, that the city council would receive its ten percent as you hopefully are aware.
The city council, the city of Dearborn Heights.
Yeah, the city of Dearborn Heights, correct.
We didn't mean nothing.
That's correct. The, the city of Dearborn Heights. The, as I hope you guys are aware, uh, Revive Golf, our company, has paid our rent or our lease, our ten percent of golf fees with ever being, without ever being late, not even a day, right? We pay on time, every time. That includes the ten percent liquor. Should Mr. Issa decide to serve alcohol for weddings and for the steakhouse, he would also have to be added on as a participant. You can have multiple participants on the city's liquor license. So the, the city council would still have, or the city of Dearborn Heights would still earn ten percent of the revenue from any sales that occur from Mr. Issa. As Roger said, at the current time, there's no plans for Mr. Issa to be serving alcohol, at least at the steakhouse. I'm not sure what the plans are for the banquet center. With respect to violation, the violation is that the city didn't provide a tip certification. If you have a liquor license, you have to have somebody who's serving alcohol, who's gone through training to serve alcohol. The city didn't serve, didn't serve any alcohol last year. Either did Revive because we weren't on the participation permit. No documentation was submitted on the city's behalf that tip certification was complete. Revive Golf has completed our tip certification that has been submitted. We're the only organization serving alcohol. The city itself is not. And the documentation with Mariana will make its way to the MLCC. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't know anything about a violation. That's first I heard of that. I'm glad, I'm glad that was cleared up. Um, what about golfers, uh, after they golf? Uh, I know, you know, almost every golfer, when they're done golfing, they want to go have a beer or drink or something. What's the plan for that?
Uh, there is a patio area, uh, for golfers that we have access to where they'll be able to serve alcohol. Um, at the current plan, I don't think they'll be able to go to the steakhouse and serve alcohol. I don't believe they're planning on serving alcohol there. So they would have to go to our patio. They couldn't take alcohol from our location over to their location. That would risk our ability to be able to serve alcohol. So we're not willing to risk that. We'll serve alcohol in our area and it will be separated off from the other areas.
Okay, the, uh, outdoor area, is that, whose address is that under? Revive or the banquet center?
Uh, two-six-one-four-zero is the pro shop address. That's the left side of the clubhouse. There is a small area of patio on the back of it that is still covered under the two-six-one-four-zero. The majority of it, eighty-five percent of the patio is under the separate address.
Thank you, Jason.
Well, yeah, you gotta understand. Well, yeah, you gotta understand my concern here. I mean, this took, took quite a while to get. And I, I myself dealt with the Liquor Control Commission a year ago, when I had to get a one-day temporary license for a golf outing. And I know they're pretty thorough, it's pretty strict, um, as far as, Jason did, are you, are you selling liquor on the golf course? Did you have the plan, given the square footage of the golf course and everything, and you're selling out on, with carts or different locations on the golf course?
Yes, it's, it's approved, so that was submitted. Mobile bars are approved on the liquor license and permit. Um, you know, Inspector, an investigator has been out to the premises, the same one, because he was familiar with the prior tenant who was operating the golf course. So he's, you know, very familiar with the operation.
That's another thing. Mobile bar, that was, you know, I mean, that's another thing that wasn't stated at all in here. Um, that, that, that's what I'm saying. It was, we just found out that, you know, it's, there's gonna be an open, a mobile bar permit. That's what I'm saying. We just have to be a hundred percent transparent and let everyone know what, what we're voting on. Uh, I mean, I, can we get a copy of all the liquor, uh, the LL Liquor Control Commission's correspondence and what's going on lately or? You know, I mean, I want this to happen, you know, Jason, we've talked, you know, and this is something that, you know, we need to have for the golf course. But I just, I just wanna make sure we cross our t's and dot our i's in this, because this is Liquor Control Commission, they don't mess around. You get one violation or something like that, you can, you can get in serious trouble.
Councilor. Councilman?
All right, thank you.
I have, I have a comment just to rebuttal this, Councilman, this is the state approving it, not the city.
I know.
The state. So there's a lot of paperwork in time that went to the state to approve it. The cities did this, so it has revived, and that's why it's in front of us to approve it. But I forget that conference, I'm from sales. We're not getting nothing right now.
We're not getting, we're not getting anything outside the.
So I don't know why you could delay it. It's bringing around the corner. Take it for a vote.
Let's take it for a vote, Council Chair.
I mean, I listen, guys, I just wanna take it to a stage, but I mean, you guys, everybody vote how they want. I mean, I'm, I'm, okay, it's just.
This is golf season. We haven't got time to have a study session. We've gotta get something going. We've gotta get income from any part of that facility. And right now, uh, he's got it to the state level. The problem we had before with the license was it was made out to the city and was concerned as to whether the other owner's name was on the, on the license. And I believe that's been taken care of by the state.
Has it been taken care of?
I think we've gotta go ahead and do this.
Was taken care of.
So the, the former, former person, his name was taken off the liquor license? There was partners with Dearborn Heights, because Dearborn Heights, Dearborn Heights has a liquor license, and we're looking for a partner, basically, to be on there with it.
Right.
Um, Jason, when, when do you think you would be ready to start selling liquor? And, I mean, how would you do it right now?
Yeah, um, so we're opening on Friday. Um, I'm waiting to place a beer order until, uh, this is approved. So we're not gonna sell liquor until you guys are comfortable and, and everything's above board. Um, but it, I would like to place a beer order tonight and be serving beer by the end of the month.
Okay, well, I still have concerns about the other ten percent on the other parts of the, uh, Warren Valley Golf Course, Banquet Center, and whatever they're building, or all that facility there, so, um, I, okay, that's all, that's all I have to say.
If you will let us know if, if Mr. Issa wants to sell liquor at the hookah lounge or at the steakhouse. I know he said he hasn't, doesn't want to, but if he were to, does the city of Dearborn Heights still receive the ten percent?
To my understanding, yes. Uh, sorry, I'm not sure if that was directed at me. That was in the original contract. The only thing that occurred in the amendment that you guys signed was that the address for our organization was changing from two six one one six to two six one four zero, and it specifically says that all other terms stay into effect. So I don't see why that wouldn't be the case, but would defer to Gary and, and Roger, who are more familiar, you know, Gary in particular wrote the contract, or was involved in the contract at least.
Thank you.
Well, Gary didn't write the contract.
Nope.
Yeah, he's, he was involved. He was the attorney I worked with at the time, because he was the attorney at the time.
Nice, thank you.
The contract was negotiated with respect to all the different items, except it was left to be open for negotiations with respect to exactly what was gonna be done with regard to the liquor license. Lack of clarity with regard to that issue. That's what I negotiated with Mr. Schenk. Mr. Schenk's firm then has been involved with regard to this, representing both the city and Issa Brothers, and apparently Revive, all in one thing with regard to what the negotiation was.
You don't know what that is?
So I don't know what that is, because I don't know what the amendment was that you ended up approving, apparently with, uh, someone being independent counsel to you to end up advising. So my concern would be, you, you don't necessarily know all the ramifications. I understand the need to end up having the license put in place. I'm not sure everyone knows what that involves, and I'm not sure if this was negotiated in a way that it should have been. If some people might recall, I mentioned that Mr. Schenk's firm and Mr. Allen is now associated with that firm. I don't know if he is a, uh, an associate of counsel or a partner, but he is in a position where he has negotiated this. It's almost like you have someone who's been on both sides of the transaction.
Yeah.
That's what my concern would be with regard to.
Council Chair. Hang on one second, Roger. I'm gonna let you speak. I'm gonna let you speak. Let's just go to the chair, please. Yes, okay. Are you all set here, Gary?
I, yeah, I would just say that, that, and by the way, this is a golf course liquor license. I don't know what they did with regard to that, which is an entirely different beast when it comes to, uh, liquor licenses. In other words, if you have a golf course, you can end up getting this license, you don't have to use other things. But it's a very involved issue, and I'm not sure what all would have ended up being done. But I think it would be really nice to know exactly what that amendment provides, that you guys ended up, um.
The amendment that they approved was just adding the second address and allowing that, if you go to Revage, we're still passing the ten percent. We're still passing over the ten percent of the liquor sales over to the city council. It was, it was just on our, it was on two or, needless, you know, the meeting before that, it was on our packet.
See, what I, what I noticed was something that gave other people an ability to end up doing any of the paperwork with regard to this. I don't know if that affected a, an amendment that you're not aware of. I'm just saying, it might be perfectly above board, it might be perfectly fine, but someone asks for my opinion, I have concerns. Thank you.
This is also during the act, you, um, but wouldn't the S and E's, whoever they are, they would still be bound by the same, they would be bound by the same terms, I would think.
If you, if your amendment ended up basically saying, it, it's not about them being an S and E, it's about whether or not the underlying contract that you had, the lease, was amended in the first place, and did anything with regard to the obligations, I don't know if it did. So it's not about them being assigned the same obligation, it's about whether or not that amendment changed any of the obligations. I don't know if it did. That would be my concern.
Council Chair.
Study session.
I, I do know, and it hasn't changed any of the terms, as Jason stated on, I, I don't want anything complicating this or making false assertions or allegations. The contract is still the contract that was negotiated before I came, and I took a look at it. Nothing has changed, except for the address that you approved. This, this, this is what I can tell you. One, and I said this publicly, the golf course, uh, uh, contract was not the best, was not put in the best interest of the residents, or the city of Dearborn Heights, was put in the best interest of, uh, the, the leasing. It was never put in the best interest of the city of Dearborn Heights. But that's here nor there, there's a lease right now. Move on. What I can tell you is, a great thing that's happened to Dearborn Heights has been Jason Perrell. I don't know if I'm saying his last name correctly. He has been a huge asset to that golf course, because it is looking amazing. He has just added, uh, a, a driving range. He has added, uh, trackers to all of the, the carts to show how far you are from the hole. Um, it, that thing has become so nice in the last two years. And the one thing he has constantly told me was, I wish we can have our liquor license because we're losing out a lot of money. I wish I can have the liquor license. I want to use a lot of money. And what I'm also hearing when I'm at the golf course, because I go to the golf course, believe it or not, I'm the only one in the city that has a membership at the golf course. I don't really go there much, but I, I am the only one that's got a membership there. I pay my hundred and twenty dollars a month for the last two and a half years, I think three maybe. And, and, and the one thing that I hear from a lot of the golfers that don't wanna come back is I wish we could have had alcohol. I wish I could have had, you know, I could have been drunk. I don't really drink on the golf course. Actually, I don't drink at the golf course at all. Um, but some people wanna drink, and now we're hindering them. Uh, can you think, you know, I, I don't foresee us opening up the golf course in the next week? Maybe we could take it to a quick study session, let's air out the inks, make all the council members kind of feel good? Or we have a vote on the table, we can go out and make that vote today. At the end of the day, if this doesn't pass, we can take it to a study session. If it does pass, congratulations to Jason Perrell and the Warren Valley Golf Course on your liquor license. So any other discussion before I take this to the ball? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski, next, hon.
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Robert Kostin?
Yes.
Nancy Bryan?
I wanna verify if we're giving the liquor license or no on this, which is the yes and which is no. All right, good on the yes.
Moby June?
Yes.
Hassan Amad?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you so much. And I, I also wanna just quickly defend Councilman Wenzel. I don't think he was voting no on this, because he didn't wanna see Jason get it. I think he's voting no because he wants to dot his i's and cross his p's. But I think, uh, you know, if the state is pushing this forward, we need to just move on with this.
Okay.
Next up, we have, Councilman Wenzel, resolution for Department of Public Works break room and lunchroom.
Right, Council Chair.
Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a resolution, um, let's see, where's my, I'm just gonna read the res. A resolution to the Department of Public Works break room slash lunchroom. Recommended motion that this Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution for the Department of Public Works, a break room, lunchroom, resolving the following. Uh, the most, the ordinance says, uh, our DPW workers, including our water department, highway and others, are some of the hardest working first responders that the city employs. Sadly, they are being treated poorly and disrespected. This is in regards to the lack of a proper and humane break room slash lunchroom. The current area employees use for this activity is an open-air garage maintenance setting. On my last visit there, I observed very poor conditions conducive to relaxing and consuming food and beverages. I also observed feces from birds that were free to fly and perch above the current break areas. Therefore, employees should be treated with dignity and provide, provided a respectful, safe, sanitary break room area. Therefore, the city council approved motion, uh, this is, this is where I gotta change something here. It was, I, I was referring to a city council motion that approved funding for the construction of an enclosed break room. After doing some research, I found out it was a Tifa-funded, uh, uh, project. And I spoke with Tom Roscoe the other day. Yeah, he said that the money is still in the account. They're, they've been waiting for us to do something on this for over a year.
I think we hit the second question for this question.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just saying why, no, I'm just saying why the question mark was there. I can say this.
Are you all set with the motion?
This was a Roscoe.
No, it wasn't.
No. Uh, therefore, upon approval of this resolution by Dearborn Heights City Council, the city council engineer will set up a meeting with the current DPW director, DPW union employees, representatives, and proper professionals to create, create the specifications needed for a new break room to be put out for bids.
Second. Made by Councilman Wenzel?
Second by Councilman, Moby June?
Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Um, I, I spoke with the DPW director and, uh, Tom Roscoe from Tifa and many of the employees. And, uh, they were kinda talking unofficially amongst each other, and they all wanted different things, and, you know, each, each group wanted something different. And it came to the point where, hey, you, you can't have this, and you can't have this, and you can't have this. We gotta have something combined together. That's why I wanna get everyone together at one location, one time, at, hopefully at the, you know, at, at the DPW yard and solve this, because right now they're, they, they have fifty thousand dollars set aside for this break room. And, uh, coming up in the next year, there may be additional funds, I was informed by Tom Roscoe, uh, Tifa director, um, that there may be more money. So I think the main thing here is to get a break room constructed and then, uh, do what we can with the amount of money budgeted, and then go from there from, from year to year on, improving it.
I mean, look, I, I got a question for you. I know you built your house, you did a lot of work. Do you think fifty thousand dollars is enough or sufficient enough to get them a break room?
Well, first of all, you build a, you build a room. You know, build a room with, with the enclosed, with a ceiling and a door. See how that, how, how much money that gets you? How much you have after that? First thing, build the break room. You know, before you furnish a house, you gotta build the house.
Yeah.
You know?
Council Chair, I have a question.
I, I wasn't done, just, that was my first question.
So, uh, I mean, that's, that's why I want this to go, you know, have, have, uh, specifications drawn up for this.
Should you give me the names that you want there too, so you can add it to the resolution? I mean, not the resolution, but, you know.
Which names?
The names that you want to have present at, uh.
Oh, uh, the city, city engineer, uh, DPW director, and, uh, selected union representation. And if need be, the proper professional such as architect. If, if, if Mr. Deeb thinks we should have an architect there, help to develop the specifications.
Okay.
And me.
And Tom Wenzel.
I thought Chip was something.
You know what? I think it should be Tom Wenzel and former Councilman Dave Abdullah.
Dave Abdullah.
All right. While Dave Abdullah begged for this, you moved into motion by putting in a resolution, right? Because there was never a resolution put forward. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I think it was. I think there was.
No, there was, it was a budget amendment. When we were doing budget season, we set aside money to make sure that we put together the break room.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I have a question. So does the DPW have its own break room? Does the water department have its break room? Does the highway division have its own break room? Is that what it is? Uh, Director, I, I, I just wanna clarify some stuff here, because.
They all sit in the perspective, building, building mayings had its own building, they sit out in their shops, one D and then D B W, highway and water sitting there.
But I mean, so.
It's not the problem.
Right, so I, I, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I, I respect our workers and everything, no problem, but why should we have different rooms for every department of a division? And nothing, I'm not against this, it's just that this is, this is the residents' buildings, not GPW, not the water, not highway maintenance.
Well, you're saying build just one and let them all use it?
But, but they currently have one that you can just remodel.
Guys, you see.
Fifty thousand, I'm not against this, what Mr. Wenzel is saying, I'm not.
No, that's what, that's why I wanted this meeting.
Right, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying is the resolution, you guys are saying, go ahead, build and put a door. No. Put the one, the break room, make it a one break room, and that's it?
I didn't say anything about building it.
Nobody has a, nobody's gonna have a Taj Mahal and a Moebor trailer, no. You will make one by room and just remodel, like remodel these changes. That's what I'm trying to get to, is that, I hear the break room's enormous, and I guess it's for eleven employees? So if you do one, if you do DPW's, uh, room, are you gonna do the water department's room? Are you gonna do the highway division's room? You, you gotta be fair across the board. You consolidate it into one room, and you just remodel it. You renovate it. Won't have to build.
Council Chair.
Sorry, I'm, I'm all set.
Hi, council members. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a few things. You're correct, Mr. Saab, there is a current room in that building that is in the vicinity that they could, um, definitely utilize. It, it needs a renovation as well. But, uh, the specs for the new break room had been already put out for bid in twenty twenty-three, and it came up at way higher than the fifty thousand dollars that we had allocated, so it was simply not a feasible project because of the money.
Let's jump in a minute.
I don't recall, I'm sorry, but at the time with that budget, it wasn't sufficient, and it hasn't been sufficient since then. The fifty thousand dollars that Tifa has allocated for the current fiscal year, uh, has already been in discussions for a reallocation for a project to replace the floor that's completely cracked up in the building, so that's one of the things that we can't afford with the amount of money that we have. So they are considering utilizing that money for that specific project. Um, so I just wanted to put those two pieces of information out there. We would have to have a conversation with the Tifa board to see if they have additional funding to reconsider this project again.
I did. Talked to Tom yesterday.
So basically, we don't have the money, right?
Yeah.
No.
No, Tom told me he does, he's got the money.
What you're saying, it's not enough, I don't wanna use it, but.
No, no, that's something different.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's hold on one second.
It's on the time, sir, or not?
I think one thing, I think we have all agreed on here. Our DPW director, I mean, DPW department reserves a break. A DPW director, I mean DPW department reserves a break room. For too long, we've been asking for it. And I know right now we're starting to move around a little bit. The truth is, I mean, most of us here have voted. I can tell you, I have voted to honor saying that we want them to have a break room. We deserve a break room. We put the money aside for it. Let's at least start some type of collaboration of, of, of building this together. If we need more money, with the new fiscal year, we'll, we'll add on to it. But, uh, Mariana, I would also like to see the bids that were sent out. If you can, please send them over to us.
Council Chair. Well, sir, Councilman. As far as those bids, I'm, I'm privy to a little bit what happened. Each department, like the highway department, they asked what they wanted. They were asked and then, uh, DPW and water. And what they, what they ended up saying, hey, why don't we just have our, you know, one big area but have three or four separate areas in there. So it'd be like four separate break rooms in one area. And that, that's not, that's, that's just them trying to ask for the most they can possibly get. With, and knowing in negotiations, you always negotiate to go down. You know? And this doesn't necessarily mean we're not gonna use the, uh, building, building and maintenance break room. Maybe we get in there and we look around and say, hey, you know, this here, you know, you, you mind walking over to another building to take your break? No, we don't do that. You know, I mean, you want one or not? You know, I mean, that's.
All, all, all we're saying is that somebody wants, I had a DP, a direct, a DPW employee tell me I had to shit on food, I had to sit on food. And I had to eat my food while the puta.
Yep. There was, there was bird droppings on the microwave.
Yes. Oh, fair. Well, we're still alive, different simple day for us, uh, DPWs. At least we can go get my break room. Fifty thousand dollars.
Two memories, God is sane. But I'll check, I have one more comment.
Go ahead. I'm gonna go to Councilman Saab and then I'm gonna go to Timon.
Again, I'm not, I'm completely for them having a break room, but it should be one break room for the whole entire department. Not every, not every division have a break room. This is not. I don't get it. I'm, I'm sorry.
You're supposed to do one anyway.
But, uh, I mean, even with fifty thousand dollars, I'm in the sign of business. You, you're not gonna build a break room. Fifty grand. And you can't build for fifty grand this year, then wait until next year and do it. It doesn't work that way. What I'm saying is that you gotta come to your conscience is that, and, and, and no offense to any of the workers, I'm just saying how it is, it is, not as a councilman, I'm saying as a resident. I'm, we're not here opening up a daycare to have four different break rooms in one room or, or an office. And this sort of office here, it should be a break room. Everybody has their own building. You go to break for one hour. You're not in there spending the whole day and they shouldn't be in there the whole day. Thank you.
Also, thank you to Angela Venegas for dropping off fresh grapes and washing them for us, allowing us to break out. Thank you.
You?
Thank you.
And chocolate.
Yeah, are you inviting us to the lunch you've been having for the last fifteen minutes?
Officer Zarru, would you like some grapes?
Sure, please. Thank you, Tim, Council. Right, Tim?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Uh, let you know, our, our board meeting started at seven o'clock and I adjourned at seven thirty-nine. Uh, I have, we talked about the break room over at the DPW garage. Before we do anything, we need to take care of the floor over there. Because I understand that's a big problem right now. We don't know how big a problem it's going to be. So that's something that really gotta be looked at. And, uh, I made a suggestion of before of buying an old, uh, construction trailer, construction office trailer and using that. It'd be all self-contained, enclosed, air-conditioned. So that's something to think about.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, I mean, let's just get the ball rolling. Do something.
Yeah.
We haven't done anything for years. Let's just do something for once.
We approved the Tifa funds of like almost thousands like two years ago now. So.
This is not, but Council Chair, let's just not put this on the list and we'll look into it later.
You wanna, you wanna amend this or you wanna vote on this right now?
No, I mean, I'm asking is, this is, obviously saying is have four or five people get together, have a meeting. Basically, and they're coming up with the plan.
Yeah.
Start proving any money or, you know, anything. But, you know, I, I, I talked to Tom Rosco and he said they have an issue with the floor. They've got money for that and they got the money set aside for the break room. And the floor maybe, maybe a little bit more than they think. They hope not, maybe it'd be less than they think. But then he said, next year, budget's coming up, we're gonna have more money. And he, he told me, he said, you know, there may be more money for the, for the break room next year too, also. I mean, I'm quoting what he said. I mean, if you, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, Tom, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what he said. And year after year, you could allocate, you know, you know, putting things, add to it every year.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table to get together and to potentially put aside money so we can, you know, we'll use the money that we budgeted for to fix up this break room.
Well, that, that's, that's not the motion, Council Chair. The, the motion just says that we, we're requesting that the certain, certain, uh, people get together for a meeting and, and start the process of figuring out what, what everyone wants and getting a, a price on, a rough price on it. Not the original one where everyone was just taking exactly what, you know, we're gonna ask for. You know, microwave, te- TV, big screen TVs, refrigerators. You know, just, just get the, let's get started on this process, the bare minimum to start out.
Okay, let's move forward on this one. Motion made by Councilman Winsell, seconded by Councilman Beidun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, motion carries.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
And I, I'd like to add something to it. Now, we can, we can, oh, it just said something happens within the next two weeks, a meeting scheduled in the next two weeks. You ask Mr. Deeb.
Well, why, why do you do this? Put me in an email, me, you, Mr. Deeb and anybody you want in there.
Okay.
And we will enforce it and I will bug them and pull ahead. And if it doesn't happen.
I mean, I'd like to report something by the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up, we have Cutziers.
Cutzers.
Cutzers?
Cutzers on the beach.
On the beach? What is that?
Council Chair?
I thought it was a food truck.
Bar and Grill.
Oh, okay.
Great state of Hamburg.
Really?
Council Chair?
Councilman, uh, uh, Councilman Saab?
I moved at the Dearborn Heights City Council, approved the business license renewal for Cutzer, Cutzer's on the beach at five one two seven South Beach Daily, as outlined in thirteen eight.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion, Council Chair?
Yes, sir. I went in there the other day, walked that place, seemed to be clean, the cooking area seemed to be clean. You know, I'm not a health expert, but it seemed like they were following, you know, uh, sanitary issues. The restroom was, was decent. Everything looked fine.
Thank you. We're becoming the new health department.
Yeah.
Good job, Councilman. Thank you for doing that. So we aim for you to come to the gallery. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're gonna have comments from council members.
Council Chair?
By eight twenty-one. I can't believe it. That is amazing.
Council Chair?
Councilman Bob. Too soon. I wanna, I wanna, you know, I got my comments and, um, um, regarding this past, this past weekend, we had a situation with, uh, Pelham Trailer Park. Yeah, we all were out there. Uh, and I want to thank Councilman, uh, Winsell, Councilman Ahmad, Beidun, Coniston and myself. We passed out water uh, for the, the whole entire, uh, park there. What we saw is something that I truly never believed was I could find in my, in our city this bad. Um, raw sewage, broken water pipes, uh, trailers full of mold, trailers without roofs, dead pots, wires running everywhere, stuff that was just unbelievable. And I know our city's been working to, with tickets and building department out there, you know, assessing the situation. My question is that, and I wanted to push this forward, is that they have a business license but no CFO. And how is that possible? And how can a business operate with that certificate of occupancy? Now, I'm gonna be, be very clear. I'm not going after anybody with a trailer. Going after the park owners and the management companies. But I find out today, our clerk's office emailed me an active business license. I believe that license should be revoked until the conditions via city officials, ordinance, building, uh, the administration finds the, or the courts find it livable from doing back a license. So I'm asking you, Council Chair, if we can put a motion forward to revoke your business license until conditions are met, uh, for them to operate. Cause until then, they can still bring trailers in. They're bringing trailers in from another park. Um.
We hear from our special legal counsel?
Yeah, Council Chair. If I may, because I am.
I'd like to hear from our special legal counsel. Thank you.
Under chapter eight of the city code, you have to end up following those procedures which require a certain level of due process. I, I think all of you could try review it and I'm sure, uh, the city clerk is.
But the due process was, isn't it, uh, if it's a health, safety, fire?
And any issue, there has to end up actually being noticed and an opportunity to be heard. And if, if there's a decision that ends up being made by the city clerk, then it's subject to, uh, appeal and there has to be a board. And I kind of doubt that there's probably been a board that's been appointed for that. But the city council doesn't have the ability to.
So, so my question is not against, uh, owners or tenants of the trailers. It's the park owner, the park itself is a business, not the trailers.
That's, that's correct. It's the holder of the license.
But they're not maintaining. So when we find people violations and they're not maintaining it, but it's something that falls under a health issue, a public safety issue.
Those issues can end up otherwise being addressed. I could tell you more, but there's only so much in regard to that. Um, it's a very, it, from what I've heard, this would be a very complex matter. It should end up being addressed through a multi-department approach. With ordinance, building, uh, whoever's doing law, legal work at this time and the city clerk's office. And then the city clerk should end up basically being in a position to follow up with regard to business licensing applications, etc.
Well, Mr. Mayak, my question is to you that a business, in order for you to have a business license, you have to have, uh, an active, a valid CFO, certificate of occupancy, correct?
Not necessarily. This has always been done two different ways. Sometimes, because remember, you have a chicken or egg sort of situation. In other words, you can end up having the license, licensing be given to you, subject to you having an appropriate certificate of occupancy, or you can have a certificate of occupancy, uh, subject to you having an appropriate business license. Most of the time, um, I've always thought that it was generally done, but Rick could probably address this issue more now and so could the city clerk. Uh, usually you would start with the, uh, certificate of occupancy and then go to the business license was what I used to, um, suffer, but I don't know what they're doing now.
So my question is to you that if they don't have a certificate of occupancy, that means a live business license can get suspended or revoked.
You still have to go through.
You still have to go through the process.
You still have to give them due process.
And I did.
But let's, let's, let's not challenge the.
I'm, I'm still on my comments, Councilman. But I'm, so my other comments.
Before you finish, let me hear, Roger, do you, do you wanna say something?
Yes, uh, thank you, Council Chair. Um, we have brought, uh, and what the Councilman Saab has said is absolutely correct. Because of the condition, it's been over fifteen years this park has been in that situation. We've brought Lara, we've brought Eagle, the, uh, Wayne County Department of Health has been involved. Um, I know we ordered that fifty case of water to be delivered because they had children inside those residents. Um, sixteen of those, uh, trailers have been condemned, uh, by the buildings department, which went out yesterday. Um, we're in court, uh, we're in court this afternoon, we're in court again Thursday. Uh, Judge Turfey will take the time to go out and look at, at, at these facilities. But because of the Eagle getting involved, because of the water and possible E. coli and other things that you've mentioned that circulate through that Pelham Park to the rest of our residents, it's absolute primary concern for us. We've asked that a bond of two hundred thousand be posted so we can use that money, um, to fix those trailers up if these people don't fix it. This, this, um, owner doesn't, doesn't do what he's supposed to do. Um, we're looking, we've prepared, we're fearing a complaint to go to, uh, Circuit Court to either do eventually an eminent domain action. Um, and, and if, if they don't, we'll take that with your, your approval, of course. Try to take that, that location and turn it into assisted living or, um, uh, some, you know, housing project that can help the residents. If, if they don't want to fix this thing up, then take the steps. Um, again, uh, the actions on Saturday, the actions on Sunday, yesterday, today has been very proactive. They did something unique where they sold the residents, the trailers and issued title in their name. But they've held on to the title. So therefore, the individual, only, individual, uh, people renting the trails would have to get the CFOs themselves, which I objected to and we filed a motion challenging that because we're saying that, look, these people are under your control. And, you know, you have the, the power, you have the money to fix it up. They don't. They're barely paying the rent for the location and to, and to, now you want them to fix up the trails themselves that you sold to them against our ordinance. We're not supposed to sell a CFO, sell, sell anything, property without having a CFO. So those are some of the steps that we're taking with this. As I said, that how Lara, uh, would look at the licensing of the park, uh, Eagle is looking at the cleanup and everything and both are involved and I've got their emails.
So, cause I, I just thought about, up to you, Roger, so. Um, we, we, we were out there passing water also and we met with tenants, talks to tenants. So I don't know if you're aware that this management company was enforcing their own ordinance, uh, building permits and everything that they were charging the residents for. They were getting citations from the management company. They would have to pay for violations. Instead of the city, they were issuing their own violations, like they were using ordinance of their own and everything. And people were saying that they would pay for some for electrical. They say they're gonna get somebody and they would never do it. Or.
I've, I've been here two and a half years. I've, I've seen them go through four, four different attorneys, seven different manage, management companies working for them. Um, so, you know, I think that how it's a lot going on. Uh, but I agree. I, I, in fact, I have, I've identified a whistleblower. I've identified a whistleblower, taken evidence and put things together, um, uh, about what you're talking about.
Councilman Winsell took a picture of inside one of the trailers. It's pure mold. I mean, the, the living conditions there are just not safe. God forbid a fire happens on one of those trailers. They're gonna come back and say, well, the city never followed up. If a firefighter goes inside one of those trailers and gets injured, we've never inspected them.
Yeah, actually, we, we went in and condemned sixteen of them yesterday. I've given, I put on record those trailers. I put on record in court this afternoon.
Guys, we're, we're at, comments from council members. We're not in a debate right now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Let's, let's go to comments from council members.
My last comment is again, I wanna bless everybody that's celebrating Ramadan and everybody observing Lent. It's, uh, days are, are taking longer now, but, uh, we'll get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryer, I said, I know, but you were next. Comments from council members.
As a previous mobile home park owner, I know that it falls primarily on that person. And I wouldn't have allowed anything like that.
Is this your comments, Marla?
It's part of my comment. Because this is created with the break in the water main area there. That is putting a burden on the rest of the residents because it is excessive water flow that we're paying for whenever we have these breaks. And that goes to our water bills, which affects everyone. And I, I think these things should be looked at and taken care of on that.
It's part of property. It's on their law. It's pet meter.
They have to follow the rules of the state.
Yes, we're not, we're not here to, you know, what, Councilman Winsell, you're next?
Yes, thank you. Um, when I'm done talking, I think maybe, uh, the ordinance department, especially Kevin Abbott, who is an extensive history with this, come up and give, voice his opinion on a couple of things. Um, to let everybody know, this all started with a water main break that was a private water main that runs through the middle of the mobile home park. And, uh, the residents had no or very little pressure. And with an attempt to come in and fix it without any kind of permit, they failed and they couldn't shut the water off because their, their water shut offs on their property owned by them were, were rusted up and they couldn't shut off the water. So they had to get the city, they have to get the city to come and shut it off. Now, when we were there Saturday, uh, Mo got a telephone number from one of the residents there and got ahold of the manager. And on speakerphone, he was telling us, the council members that were there, that, hey, you guys gotta lay off. The ordinance department is coming in here and writing us violation after violation and violation. You guys gotta slow down so we can get stuff done. Which is, I mean, which is absurd that even he would even say something like that. And what happened is the city came in there and they were writing the owner so many violations that the owner, and Roger mentioned, but I wanna make it clear to everyone, what the owner did is said, okay, all you people occupying, renting these mobile homes, you got one option. You either get out or you buy the mobile home for one hundred dollars. Making that, those people a hundred percent responsible for any violations in their mobile home, which was a cheap, cheap act by, by the owner.
Was it a hundred dollars or fifteen hundred dollars?
One hundred dollars, one hundred dollars. Just to get. Just to get them off the hook. And at that time, many of the owners had broken water heaters, broken furnaces, bad plumbing, most, most if not all. There were some nice ones in there. Don't get us wrong. There were some ones that they, they keep them up nice, and they're really nice looking, and, you know, I said, that's, that's pretty cool. But most of them had electricity only working on one half of the, of the home. Uh, the, the, the light fixtures were falling off. Now, all of a sudden, these people have to buy water heaters and furnaces, which was totally absurd. Um, there's, uh, uh, I, what I did is I contacted the Red Cross, uh, just to get a heads up, uh, start on if something has to happen where these people have to leave their home for a while or something, if the city acts and does something, so they'd have temporary housing in the meantime, and I'm, I, they're waiting for me to come back to them and tell them exactly what kind of disaster this is going to be classified as before they can come in and act on that.
Councilor Chair.
And, uh, but, uh, when, when we're, when we're all, we're all getting ready to leave, I was driving down the road that goes to the center, and I seen a little boy on a bike. He was standing there watching me, and I stopped him. Hey, how's it going? He goes, good. I said, you live here? He said, yeah, I live right there. And great young boy, his, his name was Gunner. And so we started talking, and I raced him, got out, we raced on his bike and stuff. And he goes to school in Dearborn Heights. He goes to school at parties, kindergarten. And after we got done, I spent like fifteen, twenty minutes with him. He got off his bike, rode it, skidded, uh, and went into the door. The door was like, ah, falling, you know. And here's a young boy in school with all his friends. And, you know, I'm sure he, he's not proud to invite any of his friends over to his home for a sleepover or anything like that. And there's several children in this, in, in this, uh, motor home park. And we've, we just, we gotta do something about it. And I tried to reach out to the city. Um, do we have an emergency manager?
Yes, Councilor Chair.
Do, do we have an emergency manager, Mariana? If, if we do, this person should be involved with this. Uh, this, because this, I think this is an emergency. It should be dealt with immediately.
We do not have a current full-time emergency manager. As usual, the last item that we had to address with for emergency management was addressed by, uh, Mr. Incraft, who has been certified emergency manager and has been working as an emergency manager for the city of Dearborn Heights in multiple locations. So he put on the hat as we have the vacancy currently.
Thank you, Mariana.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna reach out to Bob Amcraft, and, uh, I would like the ordinance department to come and speak, because they've, they've dealt with the situation for years.
I mean, they, uh, they already put a video out from the city, basically exactly what they did. It's, it's on, it's on, it's on the, it's on the website, on the, uh, social media too.
It's what they've done.
Councilor Chair.
It's what they've done. So I think it's important, I think it's important to find out what they've, what the owners have done in the past and what the city's dealing with. It's very important. This, this, this is something very important.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I, in light of, of Mr. Wenzel's concerns, I, I, I wholeheartedly a- agree. Uh, we've contacted CDBG, um, because technically they're not, they're not a, a, available to address emergency housing needs. However, Wayne County Reserves Emer- Emergency Solutions Grants Funds annually from HUD, which are specifically intended for emergency housing and homeless services. So we've reached out to them, we've started a process. And given, they've responded, given the urgency of the situation, they recommended that we reach out to Wayne County's Community Development Division, which we've done, um, and, uh, to explore available resources to help the people find other housing. Um, we're working with what's called the Annual Action Plan and Consolidated Plan, which explores restructuring our housing rehabilitation programs and expanding support for even mobile homes, rental properties, broader development, redevelopment and infrastructure improvement for displaced residents. So there are funds available. We're access, accessing those funds that have them available for residents to get housing in, with the places we've shut down, because that's been a priority. We don't want to throw these people out. We don't want to throw them in the street and leave them without resources to, to take care of the housing. So the county has been involved, um, HUD has been involved, CDBG has been involved, and we're putting resources together to provide housing.
Can you tell us who you've been in contact with?
Yeah, um, uh, our, our CDB Director, Leila Saad, has been in contact with them. I'll give a chair with you afterwards.
Okay, because I want to see, I mean, what's, what's been approved for aid so far?
What's that? It's, it's, um, we're trying to get money right now to get the, um.
This is the emergency situation.
Yes.
I mean, you, you, you gotta go out there and look at this. I think everyone, you just think, everyone here should take your car and just drive down the middle of that road. It's, it's a, it's an open road to drive down, and your jaw would drop and hit, hit your floorboard in your car. This is something that's unbelievable. And I still want the, I still want the, Kevin, I, I'm asking Kevin to come on up, or?
Uh, let's hear from Kevin as well, if you don't mind. And, and nothing against the director, but I know that Kevin's been on this for the last couple of years.
Just so you know, me and Kevin were both out there Saturday night, and we were out there for quite a while, at nine thirty. We talked to residents. Um, we made, uh, some phone calls. Kevin also talked to residents as well. Um, most of them that were willing to talk to us Saturday night basically said that, you know, they were getting, uh, some pressure from the owner if they made any complaints about their trailers. Um, the ones we talked to on Monday, uh, and Bob Amcraft is out there Monday with us as well. Um, basically, they were telling us that they're buying the trailers, but the management property is holding the title. And if they're holding the titles, the people can't go and apply for CFOs, and that's the problem they were having. Um, the ones that did have titles, we told them, go down, apply for CFOs. They were nicer trailers so we can get the, uh, inspection process going, and we can get things going through, so we're living in good conditions. Um, Saturday, we wrote, uh, twelve violations on top of the many violations that have been written. Um, like Roger said, we've been in court with them for years. Every five minutes, they're changing ownership, they're changing attorneys. Um, we've gotten, I think, eight or nine trailers already taken out of there that were defunct, could be lived in, and there's a lot that need to go out that we saw Monday. We were out there with the building department Monday, uh, water department, Bob Amcraft is out there, and we were out there, we went by every trailer and noted every problem that there was at, ones that needed to be taken out and fixed. We smelled gas at one of them. We called the fire department out, they were out there. As I said, Monday was a long day, along with Saturday as well. Kevin?
Good evening, Council. I don't want to bore you with all the details of every time I've been to Pelham, so I just compiled a list of the tickets we've wrote, and we can go back to, I'll just take it back to October of twenty-one. Um, we took them to court for no CFO, no inspections on any of their trailers. After lengthy discussion, they did eventually decide to set up inspections on every trailer. This was under Mark Roberts, I believe. Um, they were working towards compliance. Unfortunately, eleven eight twenty-two, uh, the attorney at the time decided to comply them out without completing any of the, finishing any of the inspections. As soon as that happened, they stopped work. Um, this is a ticket I got in right now. This was January twenty-fourth. I wrote them a ticket for no certificate of occupancy, building permits, and blight. So this one is still in court fifteen months later. Seven twenty-six twenty-four, um, our department wrote eleven tickets for animal, animal cruelty. Ten to twenty-four.
Eleven for animal cruelty?
For animal cruelty at the park. Uh, October second twenty-four, another two tickets for certificate of occupancies were written, plus another animal cruelty on that ticket.
Hold on, timeout. What is happening with these tickets?
Um, some of them are still in court. As far as I know, the animal cruelty ones, I don't think were ever, um, finalized. Roger can talk to that.
They were finalized. Did they, did they finalize?
Yep.
Did they go to jail?
And they paid, well, we did whatever we do.
This is crazy. You're gonna, you're gonna kill animals? You're gonna, you're gonna animal cruelty? We're not gonna, we're not.
They weren't killing animals. They had thirteen animals in one trailer.
That, that's animal cruelty.
I'm not saying it's animal cruelty, if you cut me off. But I'm saying that how it was, um, it was, the, the fine was issued and the citation and the misdemeanor ticket was supported.
This, this is crazy.
I'm done.
This is crazy. Thirteen animals in one trailer? We thought nothing of it?
Birds, uh, uh, I think a lizard, a couple of things, a snake, a couple of snakes, small snakes. There were some ducks and stuff. Yeah, a couple of ducks.
Dead duck?
Yeah, I believe so.
Dead ducks?
I believe there was ducks there, actually.
Oh, no.
Uh, Saturday, I was out there, obviously after the break, um, I wrote down two tickets for unlawful deposits. That would be for the raw sewage pumping straight onto the ground. The whole park is blighted, so I wrote them again for blights. Um, trash all over the properties, weeds. I wrote them for other vehicles. Um, there was commercial vehicles and trailers in the property. Maintenance of exterior, pest harborage, uh, because there's not very many skirts on the trailer, so the rodents and cats. We actually on Saturday, no, sorry, on Monday, we found dead animals and we had to call the animal control truck, truck down to remove the dead animals from the park. Um, and I also wrote them for the building grade because it's sinking in some places. So I wrote them twelve tickets. We had them in court today.
Thank you.
No worries.
Councilman Winsell, anything else you have to say?
Boy, I'm, I'm, I'm flabbergasted hearing this. I thought I knew everything that was bad. Now it's.
This is just the tickets, this is all the violations.
I like your, your, your choice of words, flabbergasted.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
It's still, it's still.
Thank you.
Are you all done?
Yes.
Thank you. You already spoke on council.
But I didn't finish, and there is an organization in the state called MMHP, Michigan Mobile Home Park. They should be contacted. The neighbors that are willing to speak and complain should make some reference there and see what can be done.
Thank you.
No, I do have one more thing.
Yes.
Um, I did hear from someone who works at a park. They're bringing in other trailers to their other parks. They go throughout the state. Um, it would be prudent for the, uh, city to put an ordinance in it where they can bring a trailer in, but it has to be a newer model and not one from the fifties.
Yeah, yeah. This, this, this is a lot that's going to be happening here.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go next here quickly. Uh, the trailer parks, I know we, we, we discussed it. I won't say too much on it, but horrendous, disgusting. I cannot believe that this is happening. Twenty twenty-five, and it's embarrassing. Like, like, eh, you know, I hate pointing the fingers. It's not the time, but the administration dropped the ball once again. This, this is bull crap. This is terrible. Uh, so I won't talk too much about that. Yesterday, I had my annual Fatah dinner at the fire station. Where both men and women in the fire department and, and men and women in the police department come together with the community. We all unite. We all break fast, break bread and, and enjoy a nice meal together. Um, it's, it's really a beautiful time where the community comes together. I thank all those council members who showed up, our treasurer, our clerk, our residents, our seniors from the Eaton Center, uh, our residents, uh, like Angela and Vince and many more. I thank each and every single one of you guys for being there with us, uh, because it really shows a good, you know, a, a real joy of unity. Um, the second thing here is our roads. I know that, you know, BPW is limited on time right now because of overtime, but the truth is, our roads look like crap. Uh, you know, I hate to blast this here, out here again, but Mr. Deeb and I have talked about Timber Trail for three years now. I don't want to hear the excuse that we, we denied the company and that's why they didn't come. Three years, I've been talking to them about Timber Trail. If I play this video, it looks like the road was bombed. It looks like they bombed the road. And if anybody wants to see the video, come see me. There was a buddy of mine on a motorcycle saying, oh my God, like he was gonna die. We need to fix this road. We need to fix the rest of the roads. How are we gonna do it? I don't know. But being in Washington DC to get an appointment is not a way of fixing the roads. It's not a way of serving the residents. It's serving yourself. Congratulations to our mayor on his new appointment. I wish him the best, and I hope he treats the people of Trinigio a lot better than he did the residents of Dearborn Heights. Recently, I turned thirty-five years old. Um, on Friday, I had an amazing dinner with my wife, my kids, my family. Hosted a great dinner for me. Uh, Saturday morning, I felt the age of thirty-five. I woke up, hand to God, I woke up, and I couldn't feel my back. My neck was stiff, and my wife was out walking the kids. And I thought I was having a heart attack because I had shortness of breath, like my chest was, and I'm being, this is, like, I was really afraid. But I went over to our friends on Warren, uh, uh, Warren and Gully, and I saw Dr. Ali Nasrallah. And I said, please, I need EKG. I think I'm dying. He said, are you breathing? He said, yeah. He said, well, you're not dying. I said, something is going on with me. So I did EKG. He said, everything's fine. My heart rhythm is fine. I said, do an X-ray on my chest. He took a X-ray of my chest. Yeah, a little bit of my bladder. He said, it seems like you're constipated. You seem fine there. Um,
Peaceful.
And then, and then, you know, I just did some of my blood pressure, and I checked everything else. It was good. Then I went out and I saw the chiropractor the next day, actually called him and asked if he could come in on a, on a Sunday. He really like, you know, stretched my back, and I swear I couldn't move. And here I am, popping Motrin, I'm walking around, and my buddy told me, you take a Motrin and two Tylenols. I says, this what it is at thirty-five? Then I looked at Councilman Ahmad, I said, this guy looks beautiful at forty-five. Can you imagine me at thirty-five? I can hardly walk at thirty-five. What's gonna happen to me at forty-five?
You did all that.
Councilor Chair, that's because of the water boxes you were carrying. Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe it was that, maybe.
Don't, don't, don't differ from that.
Uh, I got so many birthday wishes, so many calls, so many texts, um, from people just showing so much gratitude and, and love, and it was so amazing. Uh, really, in this community, we really know how to make somebody feel really, really good. We know how to make somebody feel like crap. And I feel like sometimes we need to kind of set aside on, I'm trying to make each other feel like crap, and we need to start lifting each other up and kind of encouraging ourselves to do better. Um, the city is really going through a lot of turmoil in the last four years. Been very, very scary. We saw broken roads, we saw reckless driving, we saw, you know, home invasions. I mean, we've, and it's, it's, it's not what Dearborn Heights used to be. And we really need to get our, our shit together, because it's not looking good. Residents aren't happy. Yep, residents aren't happy. Council members aren't happy. Employees are not happy. And we need to start doing better. We have to minimize the bickering, and we need to try to just start, you know, just give a little bit of gratitude once in a while to each other. Because I, I swear, each and every one of you here are my leaders. You guys have all are my elected officials, as I am my own, but I look forward and I look up to each and every single one of you. But I hope that we can move forward and start doing that. Um, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
I'm gonna go to Councilman, uh.
Go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Sure?
Yeah.
Age before beauty? Beauty.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I too was there, um, with, uh, Councilman, uh, Chair Baydun, Councilman, uh, Hassan Ahmad and Hassan Saad, and Tom Winsell. That trailer park, it's, it's always been, um, deplorable. The conditions are just deplorable. I'm glad to hear, uh, the city's making efforts. I know there were some comments. Where will the people go? Uh, wherever they go, there'll be an improvement to the outdated, uh, dangerous trailers that they're living in now. And, uh, all I can say is let's, uh, really work on and keep up the enforcement. Um, thank you to Councilman, uh, Saab for contacting me and, and getting me over there. Um, we talked, uh, the last meeting about, uh, both, uh, Lent and, um, Ramadan, and, uh, about reflecting and being with your family and self-discipline, and just now that the warmer weather is coming, please, everyone, slow down.
Yes.
I, I see people drag racing up and down Telegraph and up and down, uh, Instra Road. There's only so many people out there to, uh, patrol. Uh, and thank you, uh, good luck to the, uh, uh, mayor on, uh, what looks like a, uh, new appointment and position to quote Councilman, uh, Dave Abdallah. That's the, the, uh, city council in the city lately is things have been, uh, volatile and interesting. And, uh, he compared it to the Jerry Springer Show. So I think going forward, uh, we'll, we'll hopefully have some changes for the better.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ahmad, you're next.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I'm not gonna mention the trailer park. I guess everybody gets, get, got the picture. Uh, happy belated birthday, Councilor Chair. Um,
Thank you.
March is Women, Women History Month, so I would like to recognize and honor all the contribution of the great woman in this city, this nation, that they've done throughout history. Uh, again, I would like to wish everybody, uh, blessed Ramadan and blessed Lent. I know it's a time of, uh, reflection and, uh, connection with our faith and with each other, being said that. Thank you, Councilor Chair, for the invitation yesterday, and the fire department, and all the sponsors. Uh, this initiative that you started four years ago, it's, uh, it's, it's a shining star in your leadership in bringing the community together, regardless of faith or. regardless of faith or background, so thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you so much.
And also would like to wish our mayor best of luck in his new appointment. And.
One of order. Not even the audience.
And have a nice evening, everyone, thank you, council chair.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll take it over to announcements, we're gonna hear from the clerk. You must be happy.
Announcements, but it's, okay, I want to thank you, Ana Bobadi, for doing the relocation. I know that change is difficult, I have difficulty sometimes with change, but it's a good thing, it's a good thing, we're going to make it work. We will notify in any way, in any way we can, and I look forward to your suggestions, okay? Thank you, council chair, for the invitation to iftar.
Yes.
It was a phenomenal evening, the community, I felt the love, okay? It was really a togetherness and that's what we deserve, okay, all of us. Thank you for, council chair or council members, for the post on Facebook, I really appreciate that. I love to serve our community, just like you all do. Happy birthday, council chair.
Happy almost birthday to you.
I know. Mango green.
Yes, you see that, right, we stuck into the Wolverines. I don't know if Tom watched basketball, but if he did, he'd be definitely a Michigan fan, you can tell. All right, any other announcements from administration? Ariana. Nancy, did you wanna get up?
Yeah, when they're done. Well, I had a whole bunch of things to say.
Go ahead, Nancy.
No, well, yeah, better than normal. One more thing on the trailer park, back under Mayor Piletko, I probably shouldn't say names. Mr. Roberts had it fixed to where things were being taken care of, and then the city dropped the ball regarding that trailer park. And it wasn't followed through, it had been through court and everything else, so that's the history with that. Then there's some other things. Whoever was overseeing road inspections used CBG money and wasted six to seven million dollars in overcharging the residents of the city from a bond that they neglected to refund to the people. It allegedly went to the CSO fund, I heard it from a reliable source. And so that happened during years two thousand eight, nine, ten and eleven. And we've gotta be more aware of what's going on and how it's being spent. But that, we were being overcharged and the mayor at that time was a CPA, he was balancing things. And we all got ripped off. And then, let's see, what else did I have to say? We should also vote no on Headley, override it, we should at least put a time limit on it.
Is this public comments or is this announcements?
This is both. All right, I'm announcing things that happened. And let's see what else I got. On Cherry Hill Road, we ought to get after the county to follow up and make Inchester be forced to do this, their side, when we can hopefully get our side done. And I want to congratulate our DPW director for all the work he's done. I saw so many potholes filled in today and yesterday, and you must be spending half your time. He is now making reports that include who was there, how long they worked and why we have overtime. He's doing a great job, thank you very much, DPW director. So that's an announcement. And then I want to know why we're not paying bills right away. So professional services rendered it went back, well, we approved it back in October twenty-five or twenty-two. And it's professional services, December seventeenth, twenty-four through January ninth. I don't know how we could approve that on twenty-two, but we're talking twenty-two thousand, yeah, twenty-two thousand plus and.
Ma, ma, I, I, I'm so sorry. Guys, point of order, guys, okay, guys, I'm, I got it, I'm gonna tell them. Councilwoman Bryant.
Yes.
We are announcements from administration.
Well, I didn't get to.
You did, I did, I stood up here and I let you speak.
Cut me off when we were doing the talking part.
No, I walked out, she went to the restroom and then Council started to speak.
Well, all right, another announcement then. I wanted to thank our clerk, Lynn Sinia, for the great job and the money she's saving us. I've been working the election since two thousand nine, we couldn't be doing better than this. The only time is when I'm running for office, I'm not working.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'll skip the others for now since you're wanting to get done, but there an announcement that people should be aware of, in the paper on March second, Person Guide, the GLW reduces the water sewer rate hike. I have an extra copy if somebody would like to see. We had a lady here at our last meeting tell people to go downtown Detroit to Randolph Street, they were gonna discuss it on a Thursday evening. And it would have been much higher, they came down two percent on water and two percent on sewer. So that's a bit of a helpful thing for us. And Angela hasn't got her glasses on, I don't have mine on either, but I just wanted to let her know that she was concerned about the shape our flags were in. And they have ordered five by eight polymax US flag, three by five polymax flag, also US, and then we hit one for the shipping, oh, I'm shipping, anyhow, we're spending over a thousand dollars to get the flag replaced, so I thought you'd.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll put now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, guys, thank you so much, Councilwoman Bryant. Okay.
Just four items for announcements slash DPW report. Can't believe some of these numbers are factual, but they are. We repaired forty-eight main breaks in February, there's still twelve on our board, there's six in the department actively working on them. They repaired two gate valves that started leaking, four service leaks. The highway department, three hundred and five hours of labor hours of salting through the month of February, two hundred and twenty-four hours of cold patch, of which sure that might even increase through March. So just a little bit of just little data. It seems like an insurmountable task, but we continue to do what we can with what we have. Second item, we're still actively looking for CDL holders that are willing to come work for Dearborn Heights. It does have a lot of inherent benefits. The pay needs to be worked on, but I just want to at least make it everybody aware of it, every council meeting that I can. Last two items, real short and easy, Tom, I just scheduled an appointment for all of us on Monday, hopefully to go over and look at that break room. And then that's all I'm gonna give today.
Thank you so much, Director. Ariana.
Good evening. Sorry, I just wanted to touch base on a few items that were brought up at the meeting today and clarify some information. So with regards to the invoice from See the Cook, that was a training for all the directors at the time. When Margaret Haslett was the director of our HR department, she noticed that a lot of trainings were necessary, not just for the directors, but also for the city employees. And she scheduled a lot of those issues. The reason it was paid by myself, it was because it came from the mayor's office directly. There is no connection or speculations or anything with regards to that training. It was an open training, actually, one of the daughters of our prior HR director was there, her sales as an assistant to the training. The reason it was paid into bundles is because like with any contractor, you have to pay ahead of the event fifty percent and then the other half afterwards. So if there are any questions with regards to that, you can come to me. Foyers do not require you to answer questions, they just require you to provide the documents that exist. So to clarify the question from the resident that brought that up, if you ask a question, it will be answered, but if you request a FOIA, you will get what exists. With regards to the bidding process, again, I hear your concerns and I agree, the bidding process needs to be revised. There are some recommendations that time around have already provided to the administration, we can certainly have that conversation. But it is not in the charter or in the policies for that to come to council ahead of time. So if that is one of the items that you want to include, perhaps we can have the conversation as we revise the procurement policy, because it definitely needs to be revised. There are sections of the charter that deal with it, there are sections of the policy that deal with it, and none of them speak the same policies. So definitely needs to be revised as soon as possible. With regards to the budget amendments, I am a little bit concerned because the administration has tried to explain the importance of a lot of the budget amendments in there in the past study session, in particular, the items that are already funded through grants. The fact that we don't have a budget line item for that concerns me because it means that you're putting a halt in the projects that we're currently trying to get accomplished. So I don't know if we could hear from the council some advice on which of those items you can vote on. The controller did mention that you can vote on the items independently, that's why they have specific letters. So I would recommend that the ones that we have reasonable explanations in accordance to you get voted on. So I'm gonna re-add this to the next council agenda, one item at a time, perhaps one motion at a time, even though it's gonna be the same information. In hopes that those items that already have funding get approved so that we can continue with those projects. Because it truly does harm us, in particular in the water projects that we're already, you know, trying to address. With regards to the golf course location, same thing there. You could have simply selected the second location at the meeting today instead of sending it back to the administration for approval, but we will make that motion recommendation again, even though it could have, in my opinion, been done today, because it seems that there was a lot of agreement with the current council.
Thank you so much. Any other announcements from administration?
Council chair. Yes, I'd like to, an announcement, Annapolis High School Spring Craft Show will be held this April twelfth, twenty twenty-five, ten AM to three PM at Annapolis High School. A flyer is available, if you go onto my Facebook page, I have a flyer with all the details and contact information.
Nice, thank you. Are you, are you the one setting that up?
I'm not setting it up, but I'll be there. Actually, if you want to contact anybody, it's Tristan Jacobs.
Any other announcements? Seeing now, we're gonna go over to the audience first. Beautiful show. You have three minutes, state your name, the city you reside in, street that you live on.
Angela Benegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Well, first I want to thank you for inviting me to your dinner last night. Fasting really sucks all day, let me tell you that. By four o'clock, I had a massive headache, but out of respect for you, I wanted to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Then I would like to talk about the trailer park, I heard corporate council use the word proactive. Proactive would have been twenty years ago. I don't know how, as a city, you have the ordinance department that wrote tickets, citations, warnings or whatever. So obviously, the court system failed the residents that are living in the trailer park. And I don't know how anybody could stand by and watch another human being live in that squalor like that. If that was me with my dog, they would throw me in jail. And we're treating human beings like that, shame on the city for letting this go this far. It's terrible. You guys need to start looking into all this stuff. And I'd like to bring up, you know, I cleaned the roads up again, Warren, seven bags of trash between Charlesworth and Fairwood.
She just did that this weekend for the city of.
I don't want, my question to you is, what is happening in our court system that we don't have? If people can't pay their fines or to avoid jail time, why are we, do we not have a work program to have people out picking up the roads again? We need to get that implemented. Other than that, everybody have a good evening.
Anyone else from the audience? Thank you for the grapes. Thank you for the shirt. I don't know where you got it from, but.
Wait till next time.
How you doing, sir? You have three minutes, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Here in Miami, Point Field Street. One of these things is just to correct something, under chapter thirty-six, section thirty-six, seven A. Generally, uses that are not specifically listed as a principal, special or accessory use permitted by this chapter in a zoning district or otherwise determined to be similar to a listed and permitted use shall be prohibited in the district. So, as I stated before, if it's not allowed, it doesn't become allowed, okay? Secondly, I heard someone, I was listening to the meeting very briefly and I heard someone ask, namely, council chair, if I was on. I don't know what that was about, it sounded kind of like a question about who is allowed to participate in your meetings.
Yes.
And basically, the people who are allowed to participate, the officers of the city who are allowed to participate are the seven of you and the mayor. The mayor is actually not just a guest, the mayor does have a right to participate without vote, but subject to the same rules that you have, no one else is allowed to, not the court counsel or anyone else. As a matter of fact, if everyone wants to look at minutes from several years ago, there was a point where I wasn't invited to city council meetings and therefore obviously did not participate. And that was when Judge Heisey and Judge Van Houten were city council members here. And finally, about the budgets, the budget amendment. I don't understand why we don't have for the last two years the audit report come to this council body like it did annually all the time in November. I don't understand why the report is not approved by this body like it had always been, and I'm not blaming your body. That's what the administration is supposed to do. So when the administration says something to the effect of, you know, geez, you knew about these or you approved them, then I don't understand why there wasn't a budget amendment that was submitted at the same time. If you're saying that this money has to be spent, then make sure that there's a budget amendment that's taken care of. Just like we always used to have, and I don't understand why it hasn't been done with this administration after a certain point. Every time there would be an amount listed before the expenditure, how much was available, so you know how much you have. And finally, on this point, I still think there are serious concerns about people being paid salaries that are consistent with what this honorable body budgeted. And it'll be very interesting to see what is shown after this mayor steps down. And finally, on that point, I would have one question, does anyone know is his appointment still having to be approved at this point or has it been approved or when is it he's going to?
Just announce him. Good question.
Okay, just curiosity.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The Senate, the Senate might come to Dearborn Heights and say, oh, no way. As for our opinions.
You can have one.
How you doing, ma'am, you got three minutes, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Rene Murna, Dearborn Heights, Annapolis. It's getting late, technically, it's only ten after eight, so we're all right. So first, first of all, I want to commend the Ramadan observers for having the stamina to have this meeting while fasting all the time, so, you know, that was, it's something very tough to do, so recognize that. So one thing I want to say is, Councilman Wenzel, you might want to wait till after they have their snack at sundown before you bring up anything controversial, because they, you know, it might, it might go through a little easier, you know, once you get something to eat and drink, you feel a little bit better, so I just thought it, that's just.
Take that into consideration.
Yeah, there you go. And then the trailer park thing, one of the things that I saw was how do you vote on something when you don't have the contract in front of you? That you're, you know, you guys are saying, well, maybe something passed and something was added on. There's a, I think, a couple of issues that were, or something about that, where they didn't know who, what the amendment was and what was the state. You gotta have the contract in front of you, if you're gonna vote on something, you know, not just say, hey, here's the line item we're voting on, and nobody can see the contract. But that was one thing. The other thing was the short-term rentals, you know, I appeal to the I appeal to the citizens to step up and maybe on the weekends, alert the police when something's going on. Instead of hiring another person or pulling somebody off the street, about having the citizens call the police department, you know, and say, hey, you might want to check it out. That was my, and then I'm gonna give you my prayer update on the city, okay, here's my prayer update. So I've been praying that the Lord will move people around where he wants them to be and move people in and out of where he doesn't want them to be. So you guys made some announcement that the mayor is gonna be moving, maybe, you know, doing something for the president. And then somebody else will be taking their place, so I don't know what's going on there, but there's been definite movement, you know, with things that I've been praying for, and just because, I will say this, just because you get moved into a position or out of a position, that doesn't mean it's a good thing or a bad thing. God might be moving you into a new position to expose what you're doing. He might be moving you into a new position to cement something that you've been doing good. Don't look at something as a good thing or a bad thing yet, because we don't know for sure, you know, what, which way that's gonna go. So anybody that's gonna move into his position, let's not all clap and celebrate thinking it's a really good thing, because there used to be some story about a man and a donkey and it was a good thing that happened and then something else happened and it was a bad thing. So that's what I say, and happy Ramadan and happy Lent, and I'm gonna keep praying, I hope the crime went down in the city, I don't know how to check that, but maybe if somebody could just tell me how that went, because I've been. the crime went down in the city. I don't know how to check that, but maybe if somebody could just tell me how that went, because I've been praying about that too.
Bless you.
Okay, God bless you.
Anyone else in the audience? Nominees do have to be approved by the Senate, so an ambassador should be approved by the US Senate.
Good afternoon. I do, just want to answer Gary Miyake's request about the audit. I do want to see the audit presented to the council. We sent an email and we're waiting for the response. I know the controller has been requesting for study sessions with regards to that since February eleventh. So if we could get some of those study sessions scheduled, including the budget hearings, we would appreciate it.
Emails from February eleventh about, about, about the one point seven million dollars. It was just recently we got the one about the audit.
No, it's been about the audit.
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Next we got Zoom. Public comment. Hi, Dun Sir, if you state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Hey, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for your invite to uh, uh, Breakfast with you yesterday. That was very nice. It was a great turnout that you had. Um, I do want to comment on the fire station location. Um, I don't know if they had ever concern, had considered the uh, section of Beach Daily across from the golf course where their tennis courts are. I thought that was supposed to be one of the spots considered. Was that considered or was that just because it's Wayne County property? That property hardly ever gets used. So. It's a flood zone there. Hot up on top by the golf carts. What about the tennis courts? That there's a good sized area there. I'm not sure if it's not property. But yet, there could be uh, dirt at it or anything else, just like uh, we've been told by other people that says just because it's a flood doesn't mean it can't stop it. But anyway, um, hopefully that would be considered. Um, yeah, like I said, thank, thank you for your invite to dinner last night. Really appreciate that. And uh, sorry I wasn't able to attend this meeting. So y'all have a good night. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ben. So you, and I enjoyed your presence and your company yesterday as well. Thank you. Anyone else, Sanzu? Seeing none, can we get a motion to adjourn?
We didn't have Council Chair. Council Chair, you had public comment from the audience?
We did, we did.
No.
No. Tom, what do you think we did this?
Where you been? This year? Oh, that is, you guys, I didn't hear that. But I had one comment.
On it, you really?
One comment.
Go ahead, Tom.
A public comment. Uh, go green. And I don't mean Michigan State. I mean St. Patrick's Day. Everybody have a happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm part Irish, so I can officially celebrate it, but, but I don't know. Everybody have a great St. Patrick's.
Go green, he said. You see that, man? I'm uh.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, my Councilman Lowsky Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have important priority.
You're not even seen to say that.